I'm going to call to order the Townsend Town Meeting. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, it's there, okay. It's right there. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. We open the meeting at 9:06. 9:06 for the opening. Warning for the Town of Townsend 2018 Annual Meeting. The legal voters of the Town of Townsend are hereby notified and warned to meet at Town Hall in Townsend, Vermont on Tuesday, March 6, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. to act on the following articles. If there are no objections, I'll refrain from reading the entire warning. Thank you. Seeing no objections, let me run through rules and announcements and things, and then we'll recess and do the school portion in a few minutes, okay? Good morning, welcome to the Townsend Town Meeting. I hope everybody had a great year. Welcome back. Special welcome to those who are new to Townsend, and this is your first town meeting. I hope you thoroughly enjoy it. My name is David Lebo. I'm privileged to serve you as the Townsend School District Moderator, and will continue serving until the first article is voted upon. The role of the moderator is to explain procedural questions, and please ask any clarifying questions before we vote. Make sure you know what you're voting on. Robert's Rules of Order is the basic orders of this meeting. Please read it and understand it, but state statute overrules Robert's Rules. You have the right to challenge any of my decisions, and that may come into play today. If you feel my ruling is improper, please state so, and then we'll move on from there. Voters need to check in at the entrance and have a ribbon that signifies you are a resident of Townsend. If you are not a resident of Townsend, you are not allowed to speak. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand, state that you are not a Townsend resident, and we can have a two-thirds vote to allow you to speak. Please stand and state your name before speaking, and speak loud and clear. We don't have a mic, we have a microphone up front, I don't know if it's going to be passed around. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator. Please don't talk and fight amongst yourselves. Articles will be read, then moved and seconded, and restated by me, the moderator, before discussion may begin. Articles may be amended, and amendments may be amended, and then we vote backwards, and I'll explain that if it comes to that. Debate may be cut off with a two-thirds majority by calling the question, however, if you don't have the floor, you can't just scream out "Call the question." If there are other hands up and I'm going around, you have to wait until you're called upon. Theoretically, you're only supposed to speak once per motion until everybody else has a chance to speak, and you're only supposed to speak twice per article. There'll be no personal attacks, and if I rule you're out of order and you don't stop, the constables will remove you, and there'll be a $200 fine. Please be kind. During elections, I'll allow only the person nominated to give a brief introduction. Please, there is an Australian ballot vote going on in the back. Do not say anything about that at all. There are eyes and ears watching, and we don't want to taint that election. When voting by paper ballot, our paper ballot, not that ballot, please come up front through the middle and then exit through the sides. If you can't come up to the ballot box, please raise your hand, say something, and we'll bring the ballot box to you. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers, they might actually work here now, I don't know. Leave your ribbons in the basket when you leave, it saves money because we don't have to make new ribbons. This meeting is being recorded by the Brattleboro Community Television. You can watch it later this week on Cable Channel 10 and online at brattleborotv.org. For anybody, for anyone speaking at the meeting, please stand and state your name, and speak directly into the microphone or really loud so the viewers can hear you. Thank you. Up front, Select Board, we have Kathy, not in any general order, Kathy Hagie, Will Bissonette, Herb Stowell, Robert Wright, Stephen Fresk. Is that getting them all right? And then in the back, we got Justice of the Pieces. Justice of the Peasers. Pieces? Pieces? Okay, announcements. We're getting a lot of announcements coming through now, and we're going to have to talk about this because there's quite a few. Announcement from the West River Valley Thrives Community Health and Wellness Survey. The West River Valley Thrives is a substance use education prevention organization engaging and inspiring students in our schools and community members of the seven towns of the Upper West River Valley from New Fane to Wardsboro to make healthy choices. In order to better inform West River Valley Thrives programming, they are conducting a short community survey in the towns of Brookline, Jamaica, Marlborough, New Fane, Townsend, Wardsboro, and Wyndham, and the West River Valley Thrives has placed surveys and informational materials on the table, and they would appreciate if you would take a quick five minutes, provide them with your inputs and opinions. This front table right here against this wall has that survey and a 2018 Community Health Needs Assessment Survey. Gray Scott Hospital, Brattleboro Moore Hospital, and Brattleboro Retreat, and the Vermont Department of Health are currently conducting a countywide Community Health Needs Assessment. The first and most important part of the process is to survey the residents of the towns they serve to learn what people identify as their most pressing health care concerns and needs. Based on this information gathered from these surveys, the participating hospitals will develop implementation strategies to address prioritized health care needs. So please take the survey, so please take two minutes to fill out the survey, which is located, blank, right there at the table. The survey will also be available online through the month of March at www.wellnessinwyndham.org. Survey results and a full report will be made available later this year on the partners' websites and at their places of business. Okay? Now there's more. Hang on. Lions Club. Where's that one? Now, what did I do with it? Huh? I know, it was right on top. What did I do with it? Oh, I can't believe this. That's the Lions Club. Where's the other one? Here it is. Okay, Lions Club. Could you please ask me, Town Moderator, to do this? It's a page long, I'm not going to read the whole thing. Here's your chance to win big and support your community. The Valley Lions Club has a raffle off $200 worth of Vermont Lottery scratch-off tickets to benefit their annual Leland and Gray graduating seniors, a freshman college scholarship fund. Last year, the club granted four $2,000 scholarships to graduating students attending higher educational institutions. The tickets can be purchased from club members by mail or email until the time of the drawing, Tuesday, March 13 at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are $3 each, or $5 for two, and a book of ten costs $25. You can also email valleylions1969@gmail.com or mail it here if you'd like to learn more about the Valley's Lion Club in New Fane. Okay. Get your Lions Club tickets. It supports the Leland and Gray raffle. And then there was one more. The gentleman at the door gave me one more. It's the 3CG. Does anybody have that? So last announcement-ish, 3G, Three Generations Collaborations are volunteers to help older adults, and they're seeking more volunteers of all ages. They provide help to neighbors, increase social connections, positive healthy activities, bridging social divides, and reducing isolation. 3GC connects youth and older adults through volunteering and community service in the West River Valley region. There's a gentleman here at the top of the stairs that has more information if you are interested. Okay. At the other table there is other information, I didn't go through it if you'd like pamphlets, but I would like to announce one thing that is on that other table. It was put together by Cynthia Davis, and it has info on the history of some of the residents in Townsend and what they've done for this town. I've briefly skimmed through it, and it is, you should take a look at that. It is quite nice. There's also a in memoriam?
In memorial.
In memorial? Not memorial, yes. Memoriam, thank you. In memoriam for some of our townsfolk that's passed away this year, and there were quite a few that were quite involved in the town. So that was a very nice thing to put together. Take a look at that. Representative Emily Long will be here around 10 o'clock. We probably will suspend the rules and allow her to answer some questions. Lunch. Lunch will be provided by Townsend Elementary 5th and 6th Grade Class. There will be items available such as baked goods, muffins, and breads for munching during the meeting over here at the table. Donations accepted, and then for lunch, we have macaroni and cheese, venison goulash, regular goulash, lasagna, tossed salads, rolls and butters, and a variety of desserts, lemonade or iced tea. Everything is by donation to help fund the 5th and 6th Grade trip to Boston that I went on when my kids were little. It was a great trip. Okay, I think I'm done with announcements. If there's no objection, I would like to recess this meeting and head over to the School District meeting. It's been moved and, oh, seconded, doesn't have to be seconded, really. Okay, the Townsend Town Meeting is now in recess. Hi, I'm David Lebo. I'm the School District Moderator, and I would like to call the School District meeting to order. The legal voters of the Town of Townsend in the County of Wyndham and the State of Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at 9:05-ish in the Town Hall in said Town of Townsend on the first Tuesday, March 6, 2018, to transact the following business and act upon the following articles. Article 1, to elect a moderator. I will now entertain nominations for moderator. David Lebo's been moderator, nominated. Any other nominations?
Moved the nomination, we closed one ballot.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Lincoln. Wait, I gotta get, I have that written down on my elections, oh, no, tray. I have to say this multiple times. If there are no objections and you're hearing no more nominations, you sure nobody else wants to do this? I declare nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for David Lebo for the School District Moderator for one year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you for your support. Article 2, to accept the reports of the school directors as presented in the July 1, 2016, and June 30, 2017 Auditor's Report. I will entertain a motion. The way it's worded, who said that? Second?
Second.
Who said second? Who was it?
Maggie.
Maggie. Maggie Billups. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to the Accept the School Reports. That's on page 53 to 57 in your Town Report. Oh, I didn't let you guys, I should have introduced you guys. Let, huh? Okay, that's on page 53 to 57. Let's have the school board introduce themselves real quick. Who's up here? Go.
Cliff Passano. Al Clausen.
Erica Scott.
Christina Wright.
Your Townsend School Board. So, any discussion, it's been moved and seconded to accept the reports of the school directors. Seeing no discussion, it's been moved and seconded to accept the reports of the school directors as presented in the July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017 Auditor's Report. A yes vote passes the article, the motion, a no vote defeats it. Understand? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Motion passes. Article 3, to elect school district directors, to elect school directors for the following terms. One three-year term, two one-year terms, and one three-year term to the Leland and Gray School District. I'll entertain nominations for the one three-year term until March 2021, which is currently held by Al Clausen if I'm correct. Correct. I'll now entertain nominations.
I nominated Al Clausen.
Al Clausen's been nominated.
David.
Thank you. I know. I just, so, no, it's okay. The viewer's support is fine, but nominations don't need seconds, but yell it out anyway, it doesn't matter. Any other nominations?
Moved nomination, we closed.
Okay. I'll get to that. That's okay. Hearing no other nominations, and, what is it? If there are no objections and you're hearing no more nominations, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Al Clausen for one three-year term until March 2021 on the Townsend School District. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. I will now entertain nominations for one of the one-year terms for the Townsend School District. I believe this one is held, who would this one be by?
Christina.
Huh? Christina?
Yeah.
Christina.
Sean or I.
Sean, we're going to do Christina's spot first. Nominations. Oh, nominations, am I too close? Oh, okay. I guess they didn't really discuss this beforehand.
I nominate Christina Wright.
Okay. Christina Wright's been nominated. Does she accept the nomination? She accepts the nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing no nominations, and if there are no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Christina Wright for a one-year term on the Townsend School District. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Kristineck, thank you very much. Congratulations. Another one-year term for the Townsend School District. I believe this is held by Will Dusshon's, this is Dusshon's. Entertain nominations for a one-year term on the Townsend School District. Does Maggie accept or no? No? Maggie declines.
All right, I nominate Sean O'Doo. He's not here. Are you allowed to nod? Somebody's not here.
You are allowed to nod somebody. It's better if they know that this is coming. What? You can't hear me?
I asked him to stay.
Oh, Sean.
Sean. The same.
Sean. Sean O'Doo.
Sean O'Doo. Turn that over. Turn that over, get on here. If you're willing to present, we're being held.
I do, yes.
Okay, so we think he's willing. Don't fall asleep at town meeting, people. Okay, so Sean O'Doo's been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the one, instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Sean O'Doo for a one-year term on the Townsend School District. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. I will now entertain nominations for a one three-year term until March 2021 for the Leland and Gray School District, currently held by Mike Dolan. Mike Dolan?
Allison.
Huh?
Where's Joe?
Nominations?
Yeah. Allison.
It was held by Allison Dracoli, who resigned.
So is this, this is the beginning of that three-year term, though? It's not, okay, so it is a three-year term, Leland and Gray School District.
But we should mention that these positions are really...
Well, yeah, I don't know if I wanted to go there. Do we want to go there?
Yeah, you need to explain that.
Okay. Well, this, I'm not exactly sure about how this is going to happen, but these, the positions are all going away, starting...
It's still seems to exist in line one.
Right.
19 when you have the certification to bring it out. We believe they continue to exist throughout many different, but I currently serve on West River Valley and West River Ward, and the position is to have a one-year position.
Okay. That makes sense? Because we're transitioning to the mud, messy mud, messy mud thing, the actual, these positions will fade out in July of 2019. I think that's what he said. Nominations, anybody? Hmm? Hmm? Okay. Hearing no nominations, I believe we just let that go, and they can appoint somebody.
Your husband.
Okay. No nominations? Okay. Open seat. Okay, moving on. No nominations, last call.
I nominate Jeriah Bills.
Oh. What, what, I got two things. I do have a...
When do they meet, Joe?
Yeah.
From the 23rd to the 2nd Tuesday of each month at 7:00 in the library.
Okay. And we had a nomination of Jeriah Bills. Where did he go? Where is he? I'm looking for him, I'm looking for him. Where's Jeriah? Wave your hands. Where is he? Oh, there he is. Hey, Jeriah. He, okay, he respectfully declines.
You'd be good, Jeriah, huh?
Anne Albee.
Anne Albee. Yes, Anne Albee, and she accepts.
All right.
Okay.
We have a winner.
Any other nominations?
Which one's that?
Hearing no other nominations, and if there's no objection, I declare nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Anne Albee for a one-year, for a three-year term until March 2021 for Leland and Gray School District. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you very much. Now we're moving on. Article 4, to elect a school district treasurer for the term of one year. I will now entertain nominations. It's currently held by Anita Bean. Anita Bean has been nominated. Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations and hearing no objections, I declare nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Anita Bean for the school district treasurer for the term of one year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Article 5, to compensate the Townsend School District officers, the treasurer $1,790, the school directors, one chair at $500, and four members at $250. I'll now entertain a motion.
I'll move.
So I'll move by Craig? Second by Margaret. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we can now discuss this. I can just inform you that there's no change to those numbers from last year, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, it's been moved and seconded to compensate the Town of Townsend School District officers, treasurer $1,790, school directors, one chair at $500, and four members at $250. A yes vote passes that, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Article 6, shall the voters of the Town, Townsend School District approve the school board to expend $1,524,000, 524,0321? No. $1,524,321, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $20,144 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 16.05% higher than spending for the current year. Would you like me to explain? All right. No, you have to move it. It's been moved and seconded. Somebody say moved? Huh?
So moved.
Will?
Will and Bill.
Will and Bill. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, now we can discuss. Would the maker of the motion like to discuss first? No?
Can you explain the numbers?
Absolutely. So, let's start on page 57. We'll kind of go big picture first. So if you're on 57, if you look at the far right column, that's FY 2019. Let's just kind of travel down the page. Yes, there is a $95,000 increase in the budget, but we also had a $29,000 overspend in the previous year, so that brings us to the $1,524,000 mentioned. That's a total increase of $159,000, and that does put us over the threshold. So our equalized pupil did go up a little bit, up to 71.93, but in terms of education spending per equalized pupil, again, that put us over the threshold. So anytime you go over the threshold, essentially what you go over the threshold by gets doubled. So that's why the final number is $20,143 in the per-pupil spending. So I'd like to backtrack on, you know, how did we get to that, that spending? It was definitely a tough year for the budget. If we flip back to page 52 and 53, let's start with 52. As you can see, as you travel down, salary, health and dental, payroll, all, you know, fairly flat, but then we look to special education and other purchases from the WCSU, and it's up 24%. The total budget there is up 6.73. So then over to page 53, if you look down at special education, line 1,200, that's up $99,000. So we were up $99,000, but the total budget was up $94,000. So essentially, the rest of the budget was flat. So we did the best we could. There's really not a whole lot of controllable expenses. If you've ever looked at a budget, there's contractual things that you can't touch, health spending that goes up. So again, we were kind of limited on what we could cut, but we cut the best we could. And this is also under the fact that we are increasing the population. It doesn't necessarily reflect in our equalized pupils, only at 71.93, but that's a two-year average. We've gone up from 72 students last January to 83 students this, this January. So there was really no way for us to cut any educators, so that was not an option. So that's really how we got there. Again, special education was the major driver of the increase, and that's how we got here. Any questions?
Can you explain why special ed went up?
Yeah, so if you have students that move in and they have special education needs, that it's our obligation under law to...
So you have more of them now?
Yes.
Any further questions through the moderator? Hearing no other questions, no further discussion? No further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Want me to read the whole thing again? I'm supposed to. That the voters of the Townsend School District approve the school board to expend $1,524,321, which is the amount, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that the proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $20,144 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 16.05% higher than spending for the current year. A yes vote will pass the motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it, and the motion passes. Shall the voters, Article 7, shall the voters of the Town of, shall the voters of the Townsend School District authorize the school directors to borrow money in anticipation of revenue? Who? Where? Go. Both. Husband, wife. Yes. It's been moved and seconded that the voters of the School, Townsend School District authorize the school directors to borrow money in anticipation of revenue. A yes vote passes it, and no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Yeah, I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Article 8, shall the voters of the Townsend School District authorize the school directors to spend unanticipated funds such as grants or gifts that may be received by the school district for school purposes? Same. Yes. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing no discussion. The voters of the Townsend School District authorize the school directors to spend unanticipated funds such as grants or gifts that may be received by the district for school purposes. A yes vote passes it, and no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. To set the date and time of the annual meeting of the Townsend School District for the first Tuesday of March in the year 2019 at 1:00.
So moved.
Well? And, um... Okay. Any, um, discussion? Hearing no discussion. Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
Can someone explain why it's been changed to one year?
Because, because what, what Townsend, I'm the moderator, bud. Because Townsend flip flops it. One year, we do the town, the school district first, and then, and the next year, we do the town first. And we do that because some people just come for the school or the town. And so to give them the nine o'clock or one. So we flip flop the meetings. Next year, the town meeting will be first, and then we'll do the school at one, and then the following year, we'll flip it back. That's the answer. Yes.
If there were to be a change to another day for town meeting or a strong ballot?
Well, it'd have to be, it would have to be at another sworn meeting to change the date. We'd have to have another meeting to change, because we've set the date at this town meeting. Any other discussion? Okay. A yes vote will pass the date and time of the annual meeting of the Townsend School District for the first Tuesday of March in the year 2019 at one o'clock. A no vote will defeat that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. I believe the ayes do have it. Any other non-binding business? Yes, Chris. You're supposed to stand up and state your name too, so just so everybody knows. Thank you very much for saying that. You have to understand, the people up here do it because we love the community. We're here for the community. Okay, any other non-binding business? Seeing no other hands or discussion, I will entertain a nomination to adjourn the school district meeting. What's your name? Sorry. Howman? Howman? And Chris. Are we adjourned? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Wow, why would anybody want to stay? Okay. The school district meeting is now adjourned. Let's just take two minutes, switch the people up front, and then we'll go right to the town meeting. Okay, I'm going to reconvene the Townsend, town meeting at 9:45, 9:50. I say it's 9:45, doesn't matter. Okay, article one. To choose a moderator for the ensuing year. I'll now entertain nominations. I've been nominated again. Really, guys? You think I, I'm okay? I'm the only one dumb enough to do it? Is that what you said? Okay, any other nominations? Honestly, don't be, don't be afraid. No? Okay, hearing no nominations, and, so I put it away, hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct clerk to cast one ballot for David Lebo for town district, no, town moderator. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you very much. Article two, to act upon July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, independent auditors' report. See, move to do what? I hate this one.
Submove.
To approve it. To approve it, okay. It's been moved, Craig, and seconded, Chris. No, were you a second or no? Okay, Chris was a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the independent auditors' report. Discussion. Seeing no discussion. Seeing no discussion? Yes, oh, yes. What? Who? I see, oh.
Hi. I'm Chris Groats Cook. I was, back when we had our own internal audit, I was one of those. And I probably am one of the only people who actually read the whole auditor's report. And looks to me like we're okay, but we're not perfect, just from the tone. And that everything wasn't ready when the auditors were here. That happens. Being late happens. But I would like to encourage whoever it is who's doing this to find out as much as they can about the whole municipal accounting, because it's very complicated.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing, seeing no other discussion, hearing no other discussion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the July 1st to 20, uh, July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, independent auditors' report. A yes vote passes that motion, a no vote will defeat it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. The motion passes. Article three. To see what salaries the town will vote to pay its various officials for the ensuing year. Town clerk, $35,415 per year. Town treasurer slash tax collector, $11,500 per year. Select board, one chair at $900 per year, four members at $775 per year, and town clerk assistants and casual labor, $14 per hour. I will now entertain a motion. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Yes, sir?
Interesting. I want to ask a question of the select board of how we can combine the position of treasurer and tax collector, and what the authorities could do say.
After speaking to a legal representative and staff attorney at VLTC, I learned that in 2014, the legislature did in fact get rid of the elected position of tax collector and made it an appointed position. I know we discussed this as well at pre-town meeting, and I also have the research for anybody who would like to see here that the town of Townsend until 2010 never did even elect a tax collector, that it was always the treasurer's responsibility. So at this point in time, what we would like to do, since it is warned as an election, is go ahead and elect a treasurer and a tax collector as one entity. And then when we vote on article, no, which article is it?
Article six.
Six. Then we will also change the wording of that to include treasurer and tax collector, so that we're on the same page for both, both items.
Did I answer the question? Everybody understand what happened? Want me to explain? No, you're good? Okay. Okay, any other discuss, yes, Chris Cook.
Does the casual labor include the library assistant librarians?
No. I gotta know.
Library is its own entity.
Library is its own entity. The answer to that is no. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion. It's been moved and seconded to see what salaries the town will vote to pay its various officials for the ensuing year. Town clerk, $35,415. Town treasurer slash tax collector, $11,500 per year. Select board, one chair, $900 per year. Four members at $775 per year, and the town clerk assistants and casual labor at $14 an hour. A yes vote will pass that motion, a no vote will defeat it. Everybody understand? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Okay. Next is our elections. However, I would like, if there's no objection, to suspend the rules and allow Representative Emily Long to answer some questions. Is there any objection? She is not a Townsend resident, right? So, no. No objection? We're good to go? I give the floor to Ms. Long.
Uh, hello. Good morning. Gosh, it's nice and warm in here. I was just going to tell you this morning, this is the only town meeting I go to where it's really warm. But actually, I just came from New Fane, and it's actually really warm in there too. Um, I just dropped off on the table my town meeting report that I do every year, and there's also Doyle polls there that Senator, former Senator Doyle is still doing for his class. So, I hope it was okay that I put them over there. Okay, um, so, as, as you hear me say, pretty much every year I come here, it's been a pretty challenging year. I would say this one is right up there at the top with challenges that we're facing. Many of them are policies and laws that are coming out of Washington that are creating some of our challenges here. But we are really active and busy, working on, the appropriations committee is working on a budget. They have not finalized their budget yet, but they're facing quite a few challenges. The governor is recommending some new initiatives and spending, and doesn't want to see our budget go up, which we would love to not see our budget go up too. But if you're going to do new initiatives, you pretty much have to make cuts. So there are cuts being recommended in areas that we're finding pretty challenging, especially in the Agency of Human Services, where there's a 40 million, $41 million cut. But I serve on the Education Committee, and we've spent most of our time in education this year working on a special education funding and delivery bill. We just passed that out of our committee the week before last. It is in appropriations right now, headed over to the, headed to the floor, and then we'll go to the Senate. We feel pretty good about this bill, because it's changing the way we actually deliver special ed services in our schools. We, we do a pretty good job in education in Vermont, but we feel, and, and our educators, who have done a lot of testimony on this bill to us, feel that we can do a better job, and part of the challenge is around the reimbursement model that we have in place in our schools for funding special ed. So we're changing that. The recommendation is to change that to a census model. And then we are implementing some big changes in our school buildings around how we deliver those services, so that we can add more flexibility for educators to be able to provide more appropriate services, best, apply best practices to the delivery of special ed services. So for example, a school district could use a literacy coach and don't have to worry about reimbursement, where right now, unless you're a special educator, you actually don't get to use that, you can't use a literacy coach or a literacy interventionist for kids if you're not a special ed teacher or, or para educator. So, we think that this is going to be a much better model. It's based on four studies that we've done over the last number of years. And we're looking forward to, to getting, we, I think we just had preliminary approval in the Appropriations Committee, which included adding some staff at the Agency of Education. And you've probably heard me mention before, we have had a serious shortage of, or reduction in resources at the Agency of Education. So this would add three new staff members as well, and that's gone, got approval from appropriations. So we're going to see if we can pass that on the floor. And we also have an education funding bill that has left Ways and Means last week. It's coming to our committee. We're going to be up there a week from, a week from yesterday to start looking at it in the Education Committee. But I'm feeling a little better about this one, because the last one they were doing looked like it was going to be really challenging, even for my support, because it was, it was taking away income sensitivity, which a lot of people would love to see income sensitivity go away, because of the complicated nature of it. But it also really helps Vermonters. The income sensitivity helps those lower and middle income Vermonters. And so this retains, this new bill retains income sensitivity, and it does change some of the models. We're still in the process of learning what this bill really means. They just sent it to us. But I think it has some pretty good chance of, of moving forward without too much change. It will have an income tax surcharge on it, which is graduated for very nominal 0.1% for the lowest income Vermonters, up to one, um, it's 0.01% for low-income Vermonters and 0.1% for high-income Vermonters. And so again, I don't have all the details around it, because we haven't seen it yet, and it was pretty rapidly passed out of Ways and Means. But we will be looking at it, and stay tuned, because there's a lot to follow on that. So, happy to take questions if somebody has any. Lots of other things to talk about. Shall I let you call on?
No, you.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Cindy. And I have a question for our representatives in terms of, they're really great at, you know, the mandates that come down, but being able, that there be money accompanying it, so that it doesn't impact the towns, especially like in our town, where this year we have a run rate of special needs. It would really be nice if you're going to mandate that there, there should be a purse that comes with it and accompany it, because I feel that that's unfair. That's like saying, you need to wear a cocktail dress, and you don't have the funds to buy it. It's like, you know?
So I totally agree with you on unfunded mandates, the school systems. And, and most of you probably know that I've been serving on school board, local school board, for, I think I'm in my 24th year. Unfunded mandates are not a good thing to do, you know? So we actually have actually tried to pass legislation banning unfunded mandates. We on the Education Committee have made a commitment to not pass legislation that is not funded. However, we're a policy committee, and when bills pass out of ours, you know, we're, we don't make the decisions around funding. But we do feel really strongly about that, and I agree with you. If we're going to pass legislation, we need to make sure the funds are there to support that legislation. And I will just say, it's part of the challenge we're having around the budget this year, because there are new initiatives in the governor's budget. And some of them are very lofty initiatives, but unless we have the resources to fund those, and one of them is the, I think he calls it Think Vermont or Move to Vermont initiative that he's doing, which sounds fantastic. We're going to put some money into encouraging folks from out of state to come and live here and work here in the state. We'd love to have more people coming and living and working here. But if we don't have the resources to fund a program like that, we shouldn't be passing that program. So some of the ways he's trying to find those resources is to make some of those cuts, like I had mentioned before. So, stay tuned on those things, but I appreciate the sentiment, and I agree with the sentiment. We should not, we should need to be responsible about that, for sure. Whether it requires raising revenue or making cuts, either way.
I appreciate the input on the taxes and what's fair, the benefits and looking at that. But I see the big struggle, the big struggle for us here, especially locally, is the lack of jobs and opportunities.
Yep.
So specifically, in my opinion, northern Vermont is where the jobs are and where's the opportunities. And I think southern Vermont goes without those opportunities. So is there specific things happening now to encourage people to come here and either work remotely for companies? Or are we looking at opportunities specifically in southern Vermont?
So, southern Vermont is looking specifically for those opportunities. And when you say northern Vermont, what you mean, I know, is, because everyone knows, it's Chittenden County. And I will tell you, it is surrounding Chittenden County more too now. You know, there's growth going on in Franklin County, there's growth going on in La Mole, there's growth going on in Addison Counties. So the spread is really concentrated on the northwest part of Vermont. We know that. And it's been that way for quite some time. But yes, I would say there are initiatives, but a lot of them are being, they're focused right down here. BDCC in Bradboro has their SEDs, and you all know about that probably, but they've made links to Bennington County as well, so Bennington County has the SEDs too. And we're trying to work together to find paths forward. Around legislation, we just passed out a workforce development bill out of the Economic Development and Commerce Committee this past week. And that has a lot of initiatives in it to promote exactly what you're trying to talk about. And one of the areas where I have a lot of interest myself, and that is in, there's, there's a lot of jobs, opportunities out there that we don't have the workforce to fill. And we don't want to lose those jobs to another state. So we need to make sure that our children leaving schools are prepared to go forward, either in higher ed, or whether they go for certification courses, any advanced training. And so we're working on career, career and technical center, trying to make more links to our career and technical centers that are really linked more to apprenticeships. links to our Career and Technical Centers that are really linked more to, um, uh, apprenticeships. We just had the, actually, in, it was the most fascinating testimony we had. We had Senator Sanders brought the, um, ambassador from Germany to tell us about the apprenticeship programs they have in Germany, and it's amazing how they are building job growth and building the economy based on these, um, initiatives that they're doing in Germany, have been doing for a very long time. I know they do it in Austria too. Um, we're looking really hard at that. We need to be working closely with Washington as well, um, and it makes me think back to the unfunded mandate thing. We need to be making sure we're putting dollars there so that we can get more out of those dollars, and one of the things around the unfunded mandate is, when we passed IDEA back in, I don't know, you could tell me more, it was back in the early seventies, um, we were supposed to be funded at forty percent. We're being funded at six percent from the federal government right now for IDEA. So, um, we need to be responsible on both ends of this, and yes, I will say, we're, we're focused really hard, and I will tell you, your senators and your, um, representatives from Wyndham County and, uh, well, I don't know how much Bennington County meets, but we meet every other week as a delegation up in Montpelier, and one of the focuses on our conversations that we have is around economic development. We've had, um, we've had, uh, Chris Campani from the Wyndham Regional Commission come up and talk to us about the work they're doing on it. We've had BDCC come up, we get the hospitals to come up to talk about the shortage of nurses, and so yes, we are focused on it. It's gonna be a long haul. It is.
Yeah, one, over, yes, good. One more question, one more question.
Not so much, well, I guess it is a question, but how would you respond if I said that there's a vast amount of data that says that low-tax states are growing and high-tax states are not, and all the tax states in the northeast, including New England and, and New York, the only one growing is in Hampshire that has the lowest tax burden of all of them? It seems awfully simple to me that if you want to grow the state, you've got to stop the burden on the people, and to say, well, we're gonna come in with a new point zero one to one percent tax for people to make growth happen, seems like it's amazing.
So, um, I would say that that initiative that you just quoted me on saying was not to, um, make growth happen, it's to fund our school systems, but I, but I do, you know, I get your point, obviously. And, uh, you know, I would say we are trying really hard to keep our budgets as low as possible. I think the governor, we support the governor and his proposals on that, trying to keep spending. He asked for us to keep it to cost of living, I think it's two point three or two point five percent this year, and, and I would say that school districts have stepped up to the line on this year. We thought, we were, it was projected that schools, districts were going to increase their spending by three point five percent this year, and instead they've come in at one point, I think the last I heard was one point one. They're not all in, but they're pretty close to all being in. So, you know, I think that we're all taking that really seriously, and I, I do agree. Tax burden is a real challenge for Vermonters and for everyone. There's no doubt about it.
It, it, I think it's been very important in limiting our growth.
Yeah.
That's what we're wishing we had right now, and yet the tax burden is in place, and we've gotta find a way to, I think, to eliminate it if we're gonna change that direction.
And I hear you, but I would also just say, there's a lot of people who say, oh, people are leaving Vermont and moving to New Hampshire. We actually looked into that, and that, we have actually more people coming from New Hampshire to Vermont, and just remember, we have a great place to live here, and I think that we need to continue to support, um, the, the policies and the values that we have as Vermonters, and so while I recognize that, I, I do think that there is a, there is a certain level, um, that, that people expect from services here in Vermont, and I think that we need to try to find that balance, that compromise, all the time. So, you know, I hear you, for sure.
Do we want to continue with questions? One more, one more.
Well, it's kind of a question. When you say more people from New Hampshire are moving to Vermont, what income level are those people and what are they expecting?
I can't answer that, sorry. It was a, I, I don't know the answer to that, I really don't, um, and I will say that we were told that more people are moving from Vermont to Florida, but we've found out that the, the reverse is actually true too. So, um, I, I don't know the income level. I really don't of Vermont, of those folks.
Okay, do we want to end it there? Yes, thank you, Representative.
Thank you very much for having me here today.
Left some informational material on our table of informational materials. Thank you, just wanted to keep the meeting moving. Okay, we're now on to Article Four. I'm not gonna read this whole warning to begin with, but we're gonna go through the elections now one by one. To elect, Article Four, to elect town officials for the ensuing year. I will now entertain nominations for a town clerk for a one-year term currently held by Anita Bean. Anita Bean has been nominated. Any, any other nominations? Seeing, hearing, no other nominations, and hearing no objection, I'm gonna close the nominations and accept, and, and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Anita Bean for a one-year term as town clerk. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. I will now entertain a nomination for a town treasurer that will also act as town colle, tax collector for a one-year term currently held by Joe Dano. Nominations.
Joe Dano.
Joe Dano's been nominated. He's around here somewhere.
He's in the mail.
Oh, he accepts? Right, Joe? He accepts. Any other nominations for a town treasurer also acting as town colle, a town tax collector?
Who nominated him?
I didn't hear, see who nominated him? Oh, um, Deirdre Beatty. Um, yes.
I think it was a resident of Townsend to be, uh...
Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah. I believe so, but I'm not supposed to answer law questions. Okay, okay. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and hearing no objections, I close the nominations and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Joe Dano for a one-year term as town treasurer, acting as town tax collector. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Now on to select board. Uh, I will entertain nominations for, there's, uh, three, uh, three posi, four positions. One three-year term, one one-year remaining on a three-year term, and two one-year terms. I will now entertain nominations for a three-year term on the select board currently held by Rob Wright, I believe.
Will Bissonette.
Will Bissonette has been nominated. Any other nominations?
Daniel Holt.
Wait, I got lots of nominations.
Daniel Holt.
Daniel Holt? Wait. I gotta write all these down there. Uh, uh, what was the first name? Daniel, sorry. Uh, and then nomination from Irv, what was that? Rob Wright. Wait, there's more? Where's more? No more? Any other nominations? What, what, what? Rob Wright. Any other nominations for a one, for one three-year term on the select board? Okay, hearing no other nominations, I'm gonna declare nominations closed. Nomination not closed. Now, select board, we must vote by paper ballot, by law. Okay? So what we're gonna, you have, there's three people running. Will Bissonette, I guess you could just put Will. Dan, Daniel Holt, I assume you could just put Dan. And Rob Wright, I assume you could just put Rob. Um, does anybody, did you want to hear from them briefly or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay. So, so, uh, Will was the first nomination, let's, Will, you want to say something quick?
Sure. Just introduced. My name's Will Bissonette. I live over in West Townsend. Uh, I was appointed to the select board, uh, November of 2016, was elected last year, um, and I have been honored to serve as your representative on the select board and would continue to do so to the best of my abilities.
I believe Dan was next. No, I know Rob's there, but Dan was the next one nominated, so I have him. Is he here, no?
No, he's not here. It's my, Daniel Holt is my brother, and he says, uh, aye, Daniel Holt, accept nomination to the Townsend Select Board. Appreciate the opportunity to assist.
Wait, 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 you take this, because people are trying to, they want to hear in their screening.
Aye, Daniel Holt, accept nomination to the Townsend Select Board. I appreciate the opportunity to assist the town and its residents in any way possible.
And then Rob.
Rob Wright, live on Route 35. I've, uh, been on the board now for three years and would be glad to serve another three-year term if you guys are interested.
Okay, so we got Will, Dan, and Rob. Please be clear on your paper ballot. Is there more paper in the back? Where's the paper? Oh, there's paper right here and pencil right here if you want it. Come up through the middle and then out to the sides. If you need the ballot box brought to you, please say so. The ballot box is now open. Any other ballots? Going once? Going twice? I now declare the ballot box closed. While we wait for the ballots to be counted, we have an announcement from the esteemed Charlie Marchant.
Very esteemed. Hi, welcome, everyone. Uh, I have a couple of things. The first thing is from the fire department. I'd like to officially recognize the ten years of service that Doug Wynott did as chief, and also, uh, Mike Cuts as assistant chief, and they have, uh, retired, so to speak, and they've been, um, replaced as of August by Chief Glenn Beatty, who's sitting here, and Assistant Chief, uh, Brian Schmidt, who I think is hiding over in the corner over there. But I'd like to give Doug and Mike a round of applause for their faithful service. The second announcement is, I'm on a committee of people called Hope in Action that, um, has been putting on monthly dinners and entertainment here at the Town Hall. If you missed karaoke this past year, you missed a great performance. And then, um, this month, and on the 17th, which is St. Patrick's Day, Sally Newton and her band are gonna be doing a St. Patrick's Day-type themed, uh, contra dance, and, uh, the dinner is downstairs, five o'clock. Uh, this dinner is not going to be presented by a group. Christina, am I correct? It's a, it's a full potluck? Yeah, uh, normally we have a group that supplies the main course, and then people bring desserts and appetizers, uh, but this one, we don't have that one, last I heard. I haven't been to the last couple of meetings.
I've been, actually.
Uh-oh. Christina's also on the committee, but they're a lot of fun. Um, the April event is, the third Saturday is a talent show. If anybody has talent, they want to get up here and demonstrate themselves. And then the last one is corresponding with Greenup Day, and it's a barbecue, uh, pig, pig roast, there we go. And that'll be on, weather permitting, that'll be on the common, and that's actually gonna be in the, the noon time, uh, post, post, um, greenup. So anyway, that's the update on that. Christina, it is potluck, yeah. Um, the last announcement, uh, the Townsend Historical Society has a little display over there by Lee Petty, and we have received a grant with the, uh, help of the town, um, to work on the restoration of the Stone Arch Bridges that were built by James Otis Follett. If you want information on where these bridges are, uh, they're spread out around town, but there's gonna be an assessment done, which is a requirement to do prior to bidding out the repair work that is necessary. So that assessment's gonna be done this spring, and it's a combination of grant money and, uh, town voted money that was voted after Hurricane Irene, um, so that's gonna be coming up very soon, and so if you're interested in, uh, supporting that project, we have a number of articles for sale to support the Stone Arch Bridges, which include, uh, prints and puzzles. I've done the puzzle, it came out pretty good, uh, so you can order those. And, um, at this, I'd also like to say, I'm not, uh, tooting my own horn, but Robert and I switched places, uh, he was longtime president of the Townsend Historical Society, and, and now I've become president, and he's become vice president. So I'd like the organization here to give Robert a hand for his many years' work as president. And that's it. Those are my special announcements, David.
Okay, we have the results of the election. Get ready to do it again. So, uh, we had 112 votes, um, forty-seven for Will, fourteen for Dan, fifty for Rob, and one for a write-in Steve. Majority would have been, majority plus one would have been fifty-seven votes. Nobody received fifty-seven votes. So what we're, what we do is we do this again. Until we do this two more times, after the third vote, if nobody gets a majority, we drop the lowest person off for the fourth vote. Does that make sense? Okay, so once again, we have Will, Dan, and Rob for the three-year position on the select board. Please write Will, Dan, or Rob. What, what? Good? The ballot box is now open. Okay, any other votes? Going once? Going twice? I declare the ballot box closed. We have the results of the second vote for a one-year term, for a three, one three-year term of select board. We have 111 votes this time, which means fifty-six. Fifty-six will win. Uh, we'll go backwards, there was a blank one. They got one vote. Mike Bill's got one vote, Steve Frisk got one vote, Dan got four votes, Will got fifty-one votes, and Rob got fifty-three votes. No one got the majority. So we do it one more time before we drop, I believe, the third vote, then we drop. So we do it again. Huh? Yes. We do it one more time. Is it, where's my parliamentarian? It's, wait, wait, guys, just stay, just stay for one second. It's not this vote we drop, it's the next one? Anybody? Phil? No? I think it's three. The third vote you drop. This is, this, oh, this is the third vote coming up. Hang on, hang on one sec, let me, no, we just did the second. Now I'm getting confused. This will be the third. Boop-a-doo-doo-doo. So it is, it's the third vote you drop, somebody. So we're gonna drop Dan. So this is the third vote. Just wanna make sure, reading any people's train ballot. Do-do-do-do-do. Vote. Um, a majority vote, it's a tie. Bup-bup-bup-bup. Yes, third vote. Let's drop it. When no candidate has received the majority vote at the end of the third vote, the moderator must announce that the person receiving the least number of votes on the last vote is no longer a candidate by the end of the third vote. We've only done two. Yes.
Can we just reiterate, there's two more openings?
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm, I'm not saying anything. I'm not saying anything. So, I mean, you could look at the, the warning and see what's available for the town, for the select board, okay? But we have one more vote. Will, Dan, and Rob. Will, Dan, or Rob, third vote. The ballot box is now open. Okay, three, two, one. Any other votes? The ballot box is now closed. The ballot box is now closed. Okay, we have the results of the third vote for a three-year terms on the select board. We again have 111 votes. Thank you for sticking around, everybody. That means 56, if my math is correct. 55 is 110, 56 is 112. So 56 will win the election. Dan at 3, Will at 51, and Rob at 57. Rob has been elected to the three-year position. That was a good response. Okay. Rob Wright has won the three-year position on the select board. We'll now move on to the select board, one year remaining on a three-year term. Kyle LaPointe had resigned and Steve Frisk was appointed. I will now entertain nominations for one year remaining on a three-year term. Steve Frisk? Steve Frisk has been nominated. Daniel Holt has been nominated. And Will Bissonnet have been nominated. Any other nominations for the one year remaining on a three-year term? Okay, so we're going to do, we have three nominations, so we're going to do it again. We have Steve Frisk, Dan Holt, and William Will Bissonnet. So we got, I'm sorry, what? Oh, yes, do we want to let Steve say something briefly? Thank you for pointing that out.
My name is Stephen Frisk. I live up on Acton Hill. As Dave said, I was appointed after Kyle LaPointe stepped down after the last meeting in March. I have enjoyed, believe it or not, the last year serving the board and look forward to serving the town for another year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. We've already heard from Dan, from Dan, by note, and Will. So we have a Steve Frisk, Steve, Dan Holt, Dan, and Will Bissonnet. Will, Steve, Dan, or Will? Okay, for one year remaining on a three-year term, the ballot box is now open. All right. Any other ballots? Going once? Going twice? Ballot box is now closed. Okay, we have the results of the one year remaining on a three-year term. There was 110 votes, which means again 56 will win. There was one spoiled vote. Dan got 10 votes, Steve got 40 votes, Will got 59 votes. Will wins the one year remaining on a three-year term. Congratulations, Will. Okay, we now have another one-year term on the select board. I'm going to just pick on Will. That was Will's spot, but Will now has the other spot. So I'll now entertain nominations for a one-year term on the select board. Steve has been nominated. Dan Holt? Daniel Holt? I'm sorry? Crystal, you in? She's not in, yes, Crystal's in. Brandon? Canavere? Where's Brandon? There he is. Brandon Canavere. C-A-N-E-E. P-A-I-R, got it. Okay. I got Steve, Dan, Crystal, and Brandon. Any other nominations? Okay. Seeing no other nominations, I will close the nominations. Now, we've heard from Steve and we've heard from Dan. Let's hear just briefly from Crystal and Brandon. Do they want to say something or they, you don't have to? But it's up to you if you want to say something.
Hi, all. My name is Crystal Mansfield. Let's see, I have lived here for 14 years. I work at the hospital. I love that little hospital. I really love this community and I would be honored to serve on the select board. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Brandon Canavere. I've lived in this town for probably close to about 30 years or so. You know, I really like this community. I would like to serve and try to help improve or play a part in it. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a one-year term on the select board. We have Steve, Dan, Crystal, and Brandon. Everybody got those names? Okay. Again, up through the middle, down out the side. We need a majority to win. The ballot box is now open. Last call for ballots. Going once? Going twice? The ballot box is now closed. Okay. We have the results of the election. That I can't see. 108 votes, so that's what, 55 to win? No, yeah, 54 is 108. So 55 to win. We have Steve at 43, Dan at 10, Crystal at 41, and Brandon at 14. No one has the majority. We will vote again. So we have a Steve, a Dan, a Crystal, and a Brandon. Yes. And I will now declare the ballot box is somewhere. Is open. Ballot box coming up front. Any other ballots? Going once? Going twice? The ballot box is now closed. Results of the one-year term for the select board. Dan got one vote. Brandon got seven votes. Steve got 50 votes. Crystal got 52 votes. And I forgot to tell you the most important part, there are 110 votes, which means 56 to win. 52, Crystal, Steve 50, one, Dan, Brandon 7. Nobody has a majority. We'll do it for the third time. We have Steve, Crystal, Dan, and Brandon. I now declare the ballot box open. Ballot box closed. One, two, three. Okay. Results of the election for a one-year term on the select board. We have 110 again, that's 56 to win. We have, Brandon got zero, Blank got one, Dan got two, Steve got 43, and Crystal got 64. So Crystal has been elected to the one-year term on the select board. Okay, moving along. Now, although this is a pain that took the neck, it's really nice to see interest in the select board. This is a very good thing to have happen, so. Okay, one more, one-year term on the select board. I'll entertain nominations. This was Irv Stowell's position. Steve Frisk has been nominated. Dan Holt has been nominated. Irv has been nominated, but declines. Brandon? Brandon, you're back in? Brandon's back in? Okay. Any other nominations? We have Steve Frisk, Dan Holt, and Brandon Canavere. Brandon Canavere. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I'm going to close the nominations. Steve, ballot box is now open. Steve, Dan, Brandon. Ballot box is now open. And we've heard from all of them, so. Oh, the ballot box would be open if it was there. Did you guys already did? Okay, there, you take it. There you go. Any other ballots? Going once? Going twice? The ballot box is now closed. Results of the election for the one-year term on the select board. 105 voters, we're starting to thin out. Don't go anywhere, fun's just beginning. 105 voters, which means 56, no, 54. 53. 53. 53 to vote, 53 to win. Dan, 18. Brandon, 23. And Steve, 64. Steve Frisk has won the one-year term on the select board. Okay, that concludes the select board, I believe, right? One, two, two-year, one-year, one, two, three, four. Yes, that concludes the select board. I will now entertain nominations for a, for one three-year term as a Lister. I'll now entertain nominations. Mike Bills has been nominated. And I must, I should say Mike Bills does hold the position. Mike Bills has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations. And if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Mike Bills for a three-year term as Lister. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes, I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Delinquent tax collector. I will now entertain nominations for a one-year term. Becky Nystrom? Oh. Sorry, Becky Riley? Sorry. Holds that position right now. Nominations? Becky Nystrom has been, you gotta, sorry, you gotta end that. I'm kidding. Becky Riley has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations. And if there are no objections, I will instruct the clerk to cast, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Becky Riley for a delinquent tax collector of one year. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. I will now entertain nominations for the First Constable, one-year term currently held by Warren Beatty. Warren Beatty's been nominated. He doesn't say anything. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Warren Beatty for a one-year term as First Constable. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Second Constable, one-year term currently held by Mike Cuts. I'll entertain nominations. Mike Cuts has been nominated in absentiam. I haven't seen him today. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Mike Cuts as a Second Constable, one-year term. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Town Grand Juror, one-year term. I'll entertain nominations. Margaret Bills currently holds the position. Margaret Bills has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Margaret Bills for a one-year term as Town Grand Juror. Any, all those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. I should have made sure it was okay with Margaret. That was okay with you? Okay. Town, 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 uh, Town Agent. I will entertain nominations for a one-year term currently held by Carol Melas. Carol Melas has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Carol Melas for a Town Agent, one-year term. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Library Trustees, one-year, one five-year term. Nan Danforth resigned and Patricia Lassoff has been appointed to that position for now. So that's the position that's up. I will now entertain nominations for the one-five-year term as a Library Trustee. Okay? Patricia Lassoff has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Pat Lassoff as a, as a, for a five-year term as a Library Trustee. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Oppose, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. I will now entertain nominations for Cemetery Commissioner, no, one five-year term. It is an open seat due to Howard Graff's passing. I will now entertain nominations. Carly Sanderson has been nominated. She left? But she talked to you? Okay. She's in. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there's no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot. What'd you say? Carly. Carly Sanderson. For Carly Sanderson, for a one-year, for a one-five-year term as Cemetery Commissioner. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Yay for election. That was a good job. Okay, what time is it? 11:44. Just keep moving along? Okay, okay. Article 5. To see if the town will authorize the selectmen to set the tax rate sufficient to cover all monies raised from municipal entities for the period July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, and to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. Greg? Second will? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing no discussion. It's been moved and seconded to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to set the tax rate sufficient to cover all monies raised from municipal entities for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, and to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. A yes vote passes the motion and no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. The aye, believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Oh, boy. Article 6. To see if the town will authorize its property tax collector slash treasurer, town treasurer, to re, oh, yeah, wait, no, I can't do that. I can't do that. Okay, you can do that, right. Article 6. To see if the town will authorize its property tax collector to receive its real property taxes quarterly, August 31st, 2018, November 30th, 2018, February 27, 2019, and May 31st, 2019. Monthly interest will be charged at the rate of 1 half percent or a fraction thereof. Interest of 1% or a fraction thereof plus penalties will commence on July 1st, 2019. I will now entertain a motion.
I think the motion is to see if the town will authorize its property tax collector slash treasurer to receive its real property taxes quarterly, August 31st, 2018, November 30th, 2018, February 27th, 2019, May 31st, 2019. Monthly interest will be charged at the rate of 1 half percent or a fraction thereof. Interest of 1% or a fraction thereof plus penalties will commence on June 1st, 2019. June 1st. They begin, they begin the day after.
So do you change?
I change.
Wait, wait, which date? Just that one, not that one. The last date, that's the only one that needs to be done. Okay, so, so the motion, yes, sir.
We don't have this on the floor. We're making amendments to the.
You're not making amendments. You're not making amendments. The motion that's made does not have to necessarily reflect the article that's written. It has to be germane, but it doesn't have to be exact. For example, when we vote on law enforcement, the motion isn't going to be what it says there. The motion has to be, we want law enforcement at X dollars. So the motion just has to be germane to the article. There was, there was incorrect information put in that. So the main motion, she can make a motion for whatever, as long as it's germane. And it. Correct. 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 Okay, so she's just, right. You can make a main motion of anything. I then get the opportunity to say eh, or yes. And then you guys can question my decision. You guys run the show, not me. Okay, so what she did was she added the word treasurer because we have a property tax collector slash treasurer, and then she just changed that last July to June. Everybody get that? That's the motion. It needs to be seconded? Okay? Who did that over here? Will? Okay. Now we can discuss it. That was a point of order. So we could, we discussed that before as a point of order, which was allowed. Okay, further discussion on this article, on this motion. Not an article anymore. Seeing no discussion? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to see if the town will authorize its property collector slash treasurer to receive its real property taxes quarterly, August 31st, 2018, November 30th, 2018, February 27th, 2019, and May 31st... 30th, 2018, February 27th, 2019, and May 31st, 2019. Monthly interest will be charged at a rate of one-half percent or a fraction thereof. Interest of one percent or a fraction thereof plus penalties will commence on June 1st, 2019. All those in fa, a yes vote passes it, a no vote defeats that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. And you were very good at explaining what I was trying to explain. Your words are better than mine. You want to come up and? No? Sure? Okay. Article seven. Time? Uh, do you want to start this now, or do you want to start this after lunch?
After lunch.
After lunch. I will now entertain a motion to recess until after, until one o'clock. So moved? Second? Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of recess until one o'clock, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Wait, wait, wait. I'm going to call for a division of the House. So all those in favor of recessing for lunch, please raise their hand. Okay? Before I count, all those, again, hands down, all those not in favor of going to lunch right now, raise your hand. Okay. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. We are recessed until one o'clock. Thank you. Let's reconvene the Town of Townsend, Town Meeting-ish. We were, the meeting is now reconvened? We left off at Article seven. Right? Article seven. Will the town vote, will the town vote to take advantage of provisions of Chapter 37, Title 24 of the Vermont statutes annotation and authorize the Select Board to employ a town manager, and if so, at what level of compensation to be raised by taxation? I will now entertain a motion. Can't do that. You can't do that with this motion. Yes? Ma'am? Wait. I got a job for you. Come here. You were volunteered, I won't tell you who you were volunteered by.
Can you take the microphone? Right there? No. If you want to hear this. Thank you.
Joanna Snelling. This is actually kind of a tough one to phrase, so I think we need to work on it together a little bit.
You throw it out there and we'll massage it.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that the town take advantage of the provisions of Chapter 37 of Title 24 of the Vermont statutes, annotated and authorized the Select Board to employ a town manager at a level of compensation of $75,000 in salary plus benefits. And can I add? You said I can add to the.
Well, I'll tell you whether or not it's germane. Go ahead.
Okay. And that the, um, Select Board use the services of Vermont League of Cities and Towns for the search and hiring process.
Second. I think that's legitimate. Yep. Who's, uh, Phil? Phil's seconded. Okay. Um, did you get all that down? Okay. So I'm going to try to, so it's removed and seconded. Let me try to get this so that I can say it correctly. It's removed and seconded that the Town of Townsend take advantage of the provisions of Chapter 37, Title 24 of the Vermont statutes and authorize the Select Board to employ a town manager at a compensation level of $75,000 plus benefits to be raised by taxation and instruct the Select Board to utilize the Vermont League of Town and Cities? Is that what it's called? Right. Cities and Towns to hire said, to help in the job search to hire said town manager. Yes? That's what you're getting at?
Yes. Do we need to add an amount for?
Add an amount for what?
For hiring the, the LCT to the month?
No, I don't think, no.
Then that's.
Okay. Okay. I don't have it written down, so it's going to change every time. I can't write that fast. But y'all get the drift. Okay. So the official one that's going to go in the minutes is going to say, the motion is the Town of, the Town of Townsend, the motion is that the Town of Townsend take advantage of the provisions of Chapter 37 of Title 24 of the Vermont statues, statutes, and authorize the Select Board to authorize, to employ a town manager and it, and at a compensation level of $75,000 plus benefits to be raised by taxation and instruct the Select Board to utilize the Vermont League of Towns and Cities, Cities and Towns, sorry, Cities and Towns, um, to help in the job search for the town manager. Town manager, right? It's a town manager. Right? Okay. That's been moved and seconded, so we finally have something on the floor. Discussion. Uh, the maker of the motion gets to speak first if she'd like to. No? Okay. I'm going to start here and go this way, so, sir.
All right.
Wait, uh, who's got the microphone? This is going to be a long one.
Yeah, and I'm going to speak for a minute, so please bear with me. My name is Al Howman, and I live on Bush Way up, uh, off of, uh, you know, Broad, Broadway. Up on the mountain, anyway. Um, I was on a committee that, that was looking into the town manager's, uh, project, and the first thing I might do is, as part of that project, we went and interviewed a lot of people in town offices, uh, historical, people that have been involved in the town. And, uh, I want to thank everybody that's, takes part in town government for all they do. I think it's a thankless job in many instances, and you put a lot of work in it for very low compensation. But one of the things that I heard in my discussion was that, um, we're like a family or like a team that's not functioning very well sometimes. Uh, we all think we, uh, as the pitcher, we know what the first baseman does and can do that job, and in reality, we, uh, we would be hard-pressed to do that. Uh, the idea of a town manager, in my view, was that, uh, twofold. Number one, it's going to assist the Select Board in doing their job because town government, although it was organized originally two centuries ago, has changed a lot, and the requirements are so complex that it's very hard for volunteers such as the board here to know all the regulations and to keep up with everything. So they need some professional assistance. But is that really going to fix the problem where we have a questioning attitude about our, our fellow town members? How do we interface? Some of the things, the discussions that I remember having as part of this committee was, do we really need, uh, family counseling or team building in order to get everybody to work together and to understand what the other person does? So I question whether a town manager, which is really go, from an organizational standpoint, you have a Select Board, you have the Town Cork, and you have the Listers, and they're all in a very flat organization. Everybody on, all those people report to the people in this room, the voters, not to the Select Board. And coming out of a business background where there's one boss, whether it's the board of directors, or a, an owner, or whatever, everybody underneath reports to that one boss. Town government is not like that. The one boss is us in this room, not the Select Board. In my view, a town manager is basically, other than providing clear technical knowledge, is not going to do anything different than what the Select Board does. Now, you have an assistant right now, uh, position that performs some of those support functions. I question whether a, uh, an assistant with some additional training or with some special skills might also meet that same criteria. $75,000 to me is a fair amount of money, uh, for this community to be able to afford. Yeah, that's what a, what a, a real town manager is worth, but do we want to pay that? So I just throw it out to you. It's kind of my opinion. The other option that I learned from a meeting with the, uh, when we had the open meeting and the League of Cities and Towns came, was that really the only way to make a pyramid structure, if that's what you want, is to go change the charter and petition the state legislature. Vermont is not a home rule state. We don't, the government doesn't flow from the bottom up. It's basically at the state level, and they tell us what we can do as a town. So, um, I ask you to think about it in your own, on your own terms, from your own point of view. What does the town really need? Where are our problems? Where are our strengths? And how do we reinforce those, and not necessarily through adding another level of government? Thank you.
Right behind you. Wait. Kate. Kate. There.
Hi, I'm Laura Richardson. I live out on Grafton Road. I've been, like, looking over the paperwork that we got when we had the meeting about manager, administrator, what does the town need, all of that kind of stuff. And I was under the impression that if the town manager is hired, it will become like a three-part section of government, and the Select Board will still be in charge of certain aspects of the town, and the manager will be hired or fired at the discretion of the Select Board. I'm hoping I'm correct in that because I can't rem, I've got CRS, but I'm hoping that's correct. And one of the things that the town manager would be doing would be the financial and also hiring and firing and maintain, and making sure that the town buildings and all of those things are maintained correctly and cared for. So, and, and financial. So from what I could see, that would eliminate the need for the tax, the, that would eliminate the, the tax collector.
Nope.
Um, no. It would eliminate the finance depart, the financial one, finance person and the tax person that we just voted on. That person's, um, position would be covered by the town manager, and also we, no offense, Craig, I love you, I think you're awesome, but would also eliminate the need for the Select Board to have an assistant because they would have, a, a big share of the work would be being done by the town manager. I'm, I'm thinking I'm correct in that. And if that was the case, it would eliminate, it would create almost like $63,000 in monies that we're paying to other people. Am I right? Am I wrong?
You're right, and some parts are wrong.
In some parts, some parts are right, some parts are wrong. So basically, we would be eliminating some positions in town if we got a town manager. So that would help cover the costs. Something for people to think about because I know everybody likes everybody here and doesn't want to take away someone's job. But I also feel that according to what I read in this report, that, um, the Select, you know, there's a lot of people that are getting older, that are wanting to no longer be as involved in all of the town government. It's getting to be a very difficult thing for some folks. And maybe this would take a lot of the burden off the Select Board to have to be trying to take care of everything, and they can just focus on that third part of the pie. And they wouldn't be getting as tired, and it would, you know? So, you know, I think we have to do something from what I've been reading here. It just seems like it's just getting to be too much to run this town, especially with the state's mandates, without a professional to do it. So that's just all I got to say.
Gentleman over here had his hand up.
I'm Alan Shirts. Um, is the $75,000 within the range of what town managers get paid throughout the state?
It's around, it's around the median. Further discussion? Way, uh, way in the back. Kate, way in the back. And then we'll come forward up here.
My name is Ellie Lemire. I'd like to know how many hours, uh, our assist, uh, Select Board Assistant works now? How many hours does he put in? Say, a week?
Did you hear that? He said, he, he said that so, average, he says he thinks around 40. Some weeks a little bit less, but some weeks he's here on weekends and working much more than 40. Some weeks. And he hasn't taken, he hasn't taken any sick time or vacation in 10 years. I'm just re, I'm just saying what he, the administrative assistant said. Craig? Okay. Right up here. Okay? I saw a hand, right there. Come, come, go, 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 second row, right here.
Thank you. I'm Gene Cook. In the interest of full, full disclosure, first of all, I'm on the board of Listers. But I would urge you, forget $75,000 because by the time you add the benefits, as many of you probably know, you're probably looking at something a lot closer to $100,000 or even more. So now, my other question is, is the administrative assistant's position definitely eliminated by a town manager?
Basically, there's going to have to be crossing because the knowledge, if we decide to hire a manager or an administrator, it doesn't matter, the knowledge that's currently here.
Between the, the Select Board Assistant, the Select Board, and the other entities in town, there's going to need to be a crossover time for this person to come up to speed. You can't just walk into this town cold and run it. It, it just doesn't work.
Okay. So, but once the town manager is up to speed, then the administrative assistant will no longer be? Maybe six months? Yeah. Okay. Three months, six months, something like that. Well, that's important because are we adding $100,000 to the existing salary of the, of the administrator? Or is some of that money now going to be transferred to the town manager, which will result in a smaller actual increase? So I think we should know that. All in all, I'm not in favor of adding another layer of government. I want to keep the government as close to the people as possible. And a town manager who is answerable only to the Select Board, I can't tell you how many times I've seen in the newspaper so-and-so was fired or resigned after a year or even less as a town manager and got a great big golden parachute of $150,000 that taxpayers had to pay for. And I'm not in favor of adding another person unless I get an awful lot more information than I have now. Thank you.
Further discussion? Over here, Kate. Way over there.
David, is this the appropriate time to make a motion to amend the motion?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to have a range of between $60,000 and $80,000 for the salary. And I also would like to include that the Select Board appoint or have available a group of citizens to assist after the V L T C does their preliminary interviews of candidates to assist the, the board.
Okay. Is that seconded by anybody? Eddie? Eddie? There was, yeah. Okay. Now, okay, so, so now we're just talking about the amendment. Drop everything that has to do with town governance and talking about town governance for the moment. We will go back to town governance. For now, we're just discussing this new amendment that's been moved and seconded about the $60,000 to $80,000. That's going to be in place of the $75,000. And in addition to the Select Board or appointed group of citizens to assist, um, no, to appoint, the Select Board to, to appoint a group of citizens to assist in the, uh, search. Let's discuss that. Any discussion on that amendment? And then we'll, we'll vote on that amendment before we vote on the main motion.[1748.76] Yes?
Does the dollar amount include the benefits or are the benefits on top of it?
Maker of, so, so $60,000, $80,000 plus benefits is what you meant?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll leave that in the amended motion. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, microphone. I'm going to go inside.
I think, me first. Okay. I think that the idea of having a group of people from the town, if we can find people that are willing to do it, to actually help in the hiring process, if this does happen, would be really good because we could maybe get a representative from different aspects of the people in the town that are going to be really affected by whether or not, whether we have a town manager or administrator. Like, if we could have a representative from Grace Cottage, the elementary school, the business association, whatever, JQ citizen, so that we, everybody in the town could have like a little bit of say as to, you know, is this person going to work well with us? I don't know if we can get that many people, but it does seem like a good idea.
Okay, up front, up front here. And I want to add something.
Caleb Kiernan. I have a question on page 11 for the general funds. Last year, when we looked at the administrative assistant benefits, it jumped up, you know, like $12,000, which the select board had said was a placeholder for a town manager benefits. So, is that included then in what we're considering of that already being funded?
The amount that's in the, in the select board benefits, or legal assistance benefits, is a placeholder right now because the administrative assistant is not taking the benefits he's entitled to. So, that may change this year. Technically, they're there, they're not being used, but there's nothing to say that it's, if you do not approve the town manager, that the select board assistant will not use those benefits. In other words, right now, that, right now, they're just in limbo. Nobody's using them.
Right. And last year, when we asked about the change of why it was so much that we were adding to it, we were placeholder it for town manager.
We were placing only, we were placing--
It was said.
We what?
That's what was said.
We, we were holding them for the possibility of a town manager or for the select board assistant, if in fact he needed to take the benefits. Right now, he is not receiving the benefits. So, they're in the select board line simply because he's entitled to those benefits and we need to raise them if he does need to use them. If he doesn't use them, they could be applied to a town manager.
One other thing, one other thing I just wanted to say about that amendment, and I, you know, the $60,000 to $80,000, is that how the town wants to word it? Or did they, do you want to just say up to $80,000? I mean, I ju, I just want to help massage this amendment. I don't want to change, and it's not up to me, but when you, since I've been thinking about that, I don't know if that's the best way to do it. Would the maker of the amendment accept up to $80,000? Or did you really want $60,000 to $80,000? It's okay.
Not to exceed.
Right. That's what I'm saying. It's up to, go ahead.
Generally, when you talk about salaries, you talk in terms of ranges. I'm okay with up to 80, but generally, it's a range.
Okay, okay, then keep it as the range. That's, that's what we're talking about. We're going to keep it at the range. That's fine. I just wanted to point that out. That's fine. Okay, more discussion about this amendment. Amendment. We got one and then two. Not, not town governance.
I just got a quick question. What is the median salary for an administrator?
What's the median salary for an administrator or the manager?
For a town administrator.
For a town administrator. Do we know the median for a town administrator?
Not town manager, town administrator.
And with a town administrator, a lot of the salaries that we do see that are in that, that handout that was given are for part-time people as well. So, for example, I believe it's Grafton that has a part-time administrator and that salary seems to run in the $35,000 to $40,000 range.
Okay, one. You want to say something? Your son has the microphone.
On the tapping of the, or the range, you basically are guaranteeing you're going to spend $60,000 on a manager if you go with the manager's role. So, to leave it up to $80,000 is a better way to word it, and we give it to $58,000. It may just be, feel worth thinking about.
You want me to really make your life miserable? Would you like to make an amendment to the amendment? Sorry.
I want to amend the amendment.
Hmm?
Change the wording.
Well, that's, that's, that's up to him and that's okay. I mean, seriously, we should probably amend the amendment.
I personally don't agree with the town manager.
Okay, no, no, that's, we're not talking about that yet. We're not talking about that yet. We're talking about the amendment. We'll get back to that.
You've got a random, I have to amend this amendment. Amendment? I would say put it up to $80,000 so you do not force yourself to fork out $60,000 if you find a candidate capable of $58,000 or $55,000.
Okay.
Up to, up to, makes sense. I like the range, but I'll think it's cheaper if I get it.
It was pointed out that because of the nature of the town, you're raising money by taxes and having something specific and helpful, so up to $80,000.
Is, is, is the maker of the amendment adjusting the amendment or should we do it like officially?
You can do a friendly suggestion.
I adjust the amendment if that's okay.
Okay. We're adjusting the amendment.
Only if the second agrees.
Right. Only if the second agrees. Correct. It was Hedy. Do you agree to the change of the amendment?
Sure.
Okay. It doesn't really, okay. So, let's, we're going to change it to say up to $80,000. If there's no objection, I'll use that term. If there's no objection, we'll change the amendment to up to $80,000 rather than having a vote on it. We okay with that? Okay, I will in a sec. Because we're going to vote on it in a second. Any other discussion about the amendment? Yes?
The amendment is to include benefits.
Yes.
And in 2017, we used $2,323 for the administrative assistance benefits. Am I reading that correctly? And then for 2013, it's $40,909.
Hang, hang, hang on. We're, we're not hearing you.
In 2017, the administrative assistance benefits line was 23, $2,323.
Page your last.
In 2018, the current year we're in, we had to add health insurance. That 2323 did not include health insurance. The 140909 does. 14909 does. That's health insurance. The 2323 was just eye and dental.
And retirement.
Oh, that's right, and retirement.
Full-time employee, I'm required to pay the state retirement system. That's not by trust, but I'm required to pay the system. The majority of the benefits are retirement.
Okay, that's--
The dental, I think, is about five or six, six and a quarter, I believe, and the eye med, eye insurance is $80,000 a year.
So, the town has to pay over $11,000 to the state for your retirement?
No, no, it's the 2300. 2323 is what the town paid in toward my retirement. I paid another 20, well, probably about $2,000 because it's a little less than the contribution into the retirement. 600, I'm sorry. The benefits line was, was morphed together to include all the benefits. And then that would be for every full-time employee, full-time employees of the town, and I'm a salaried employee, have to pay into the retirement system. If you work more than 30 hours a week, you're considered a full-time employee. Most of that line that you see for 2017, probably close to 2,000 of it is for the retirement account. I also get dental insurance, which is five or 600 bucks. I get eye insurance, which is 80. So, 700 of that 23 is toward medical. I don't get Blue Cross Blue Shield, to which I was entitled because my wife covers me. I'm now over 65. That's not going to happen. So, I'm not entitled to it anymore. It has been put in, in part as a placeholder. If I'm still here, I may use some of the supplemental to cover on a, the Medicare supplemental if I go into the Medicare system, which I'm not on yet. That having been said, most of what you're seeing is actual benefits for 2017 or toward the retirement fund. That would be the town's payment toward a retirement account. Yeah, and you'll see, you'll see the same on, on the town clerk. You'll see the same on the highway crew, those kinds of things, under benefits, but it is a, a combination of benefits that have been put together rather than break them all out separately to save some of the room here. But all these numbers are available.
The 14909--
The 14909 is the cost of Blue Cross Blue Shield right now for a full-time employee. I'm not taking that. It's money that's been put into the budget as a placeholder in case somebody else comes in, a town administrator, a town manager, in case, to put it in there basically into the budget for next year. If that be the case, one of the benefits. But I'm not presently taking it. I can't actually take that because I'm over 65 and I have to go into the Medicare system as soon as, as soon as my wife's coverage with Blue Cross Blue Shield comes to an end. Because she's covering me on a family claim, however that works.
Okay. Any other discussion? You've already spoken twice, although we're on an amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment? We're going to get back to the main motion eventually, but we're speaking about the amendment.
Andy Snelling. I did want to clarify, there was some question about what the, a town manager could do and what other jobs we might be able to kind of wrap up into that position. We do have a problem timing-wise, as I think was pointed out, that we did just vote and elect treasurer, tax collector, and delinquent tax collector. Those positions could be done by a town manager, but not this year because we just voted on, on them for this upcoming year. So, we do have the time difference there. If you were to look a year hence, then they could be wrapped up in that town manager responsibility.
I don't think so.
I believe we have to amend the charter to eliminate the--
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You got to get state, state--
According to statutes, the town manager cannot say pay, sign pay orders or anything else. He's just, the rule is here, he's not a treasurer. Or wouldn't, couldn't be the treasurer. That's one of the projects that they, according to the statute, is a conflict of interest.
No, you can respond, you can respond to that. You can respond to that. And then we'll go over here.
A town manager cannot handle orders or payments for the town general fund. They can collect taxes and delinquent taxes. And the compensation that we set for a treasurer or tax collector can be adjusted. So, they also can be, serve as the finance director, so they also could do bookkeeping as well in that aspect, if that all fit into one position.
If you have, he cannot sign the orders and you're still going to have somebody to be a treasurer to sign the orders.
They can't, they can't sign the general fund orders. They can sign as road commissioner. They can say, sign the highway orders.
You can't sign the pay orders.
That's correct. They can't sign the pay orders.
That's a conflict--
Pay orders for the general fund of the town.
Pat, pass it this way. Look for the, wait, look for the microphone. It's coming down. Pat, just, yeah, oh, you didn't have to go all the way around there. Thank you.
If you just pass it back to me--
There you go. That's town support.
All right, I've just got the, you just, the Vermont statutes on my phone here, so I'm going to read what it says here. The duties of a town manager can be all kinds of things, basically what the select board does, but they cannot be duties performed by elected officers that presently exist. So, if there's a, the town manager can't be the town clerk and the town manager can't be the treasurer. The way I read the statute.
Yep, right here. That's fine.
Windis Berry. I was just referring, I'm referring to page 16 of this handout, town manager form of government. And it, it shows that the manager is directly under the select board and the treasurer is separate. And so, it doesn't look like the manager does anything that the treasurer does, and I don't know about the tax collecting, but it seems pretty straightforward on this, on this page here.
Okay, hang, okay, thank you. Hang on with your hands for one second. Those are off. That was off. Okay. We have an amendment on the floor and we're talking about town governance. I want to talk about the amendment because we need to vote on the amendment, then the main motion is back on the floor. I want to continue discussion, but I want to do it appropriately. Is there any other discussion about the amendment up to $80,000 and instruct the select board to appoint a group of citizens? That's what we're going to discuss. Bill?
I'd like to end the selectman's position on the amendment.
I'd like to end?
Here.
What?
You'd like to hear the select board.
Oh, on the amendment? You want to hear the select board's opinion on the amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Does the select board have an opinion on the amendment? We have a microphone there. On the amendment?
On the amendment. I, I believe the amendment as, as stated, can you hear me? The amendment, I believe, as stated, covers the salary benefits for a proposed hiring of a town manager. The addition of the, the VLCT was in the original motion, correct? Not in the amendment?
Yes, the VLC was in the original motion, which remains. And then we're going to also add the citizen group. That's in the amendment.
The amendment. I do, I do like the idea of a, a citizen group to discuss and help the select board with the process of interviewing and selecting a person that we can all agree to do the job.
Okay, any other discussion about-- Any other discussion about the amendment? Okay, seeing no other discussion, we have an amendment on the floor. This is not to determine whether or not we're changing town governance, just so that you understand that. This is just a vote for the amendment. The amendment, I don't know, as long as everybody understands, the amendment changes the main motion salary to up to $80,000 plus benefits, up to, and instructs the select board to appoint a group of citizens to, to assist in the town manager's search. Everybody understand what we're voting for? A yes vote passes that amendment and adds that language to the main motion, a no vote defeats it, and the main motion stands. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Okay, the amendment passes. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that's kind of all over the place. I'll try to summarize. The motion will state the town of Townsend to, to instruct the town of Townsend to take advantage of the provisions of chapter 37 of title 24 of the Vermont statutes and authorize the select board to employ a town manager at a level of compensation up to $80,000 including, in, plus benefits, not including benefits, up to $80,000 plus benefits, and instruct the select board to utilize the Vermont League of Cities and Towns to aid in the search for said moderator. Eh, I mean, thank you, I'm out of here. For said town manager. I know, right. For said town manager as, and for the select board to appoint a group of citizens to assist in the search as well. Blah. You get the drift? Okay. Discussion, continue. Yes, right there, and then, yes.
So, one of the things that I'm hearing a lot of confusion about at the moment is whether the town manager can take the position of treasurer. And that is a very confusing issue and it's made more confusing by the fact that the legislature just recently passed a new statute that the select board now has the authority to appoint a treasurer, also a town clerk, if the town decides that they want to go that route rather than having that person elected. Given that, I, I really do believe that we could go to having the town manager also be the treasurer. We can't override the people that we elected today, but in looking toward the future, we could combine those. So, in looking for savings, I think that we could legitimately see that as a source of savings. In addition, I think that it's really important to think about the other things that a town manager can take over, the kinds of savings that they can bring us. One of the issues that we found was really important when we had our committee, is that there's a dysfunction between the select board and the road foreman. And one of the things that a manager brings-- And one of the things that a manager brings is the position of road commissioner. In fact, that's, that's mandated, that they have to be road commissioner. I think we need somebody in that position, no matter what we do. That, that interface is simply not working. When that doesn't work, our money is wasted. And over and over, what we really found in our, in our investigations was that there's a lot of money that is being wasted, a lot of taxpayers' money being wasted, not because people aren't trying to do a good job, everybody is, but there's just a lot of inefficiencies. And so, I believe that a town manager could actually be revenue neutral. The other thing a town manager can bring is the ability, we hope, the ability to apply for and manage grants. And that is a, that is how towns get money from the state now. We used to just get it kind of given to us, now we have to get it through grants. And the select board has been very clear that that is a very difficult thing for them to apply for and manage grants. So, that's another area where we really might see savings that would help to pay for a manager.
Okay. Any other discussion? You wanted to say one more thing and I didn't let you, but I think it's dying down. No, no, it's okay. You can, you can, no, she said it all. Okay. Good, thank you. Any further discussion about town governance? I got two. Go in the back first and then up front here.
This is Crystal again. I just wondered if it's appropriate to ask the select board either individually or collectively if you could speak to your thoughts about whether we need a town manager.
Do you want? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, and I would like to touch on what Gene Cook had mentioned earlier. If you're going to use VLTC to help search for a candidate, I can almost assure you you're not going to find it in Nuthane or Brookline or Townsend. It's coming from out of state. And that person's not going to come here for anything less than a three-year contract. And if that candidate doesn't seem to have a good fit with the town of Townsend, it's going to be a very long three years because the cost of getting rid of them is going to be very, very high.
My feeling is the same as Steve's when it comes to the manager part, if we do sign somebody in, as Gene said, and it doesn't work out, there's a serious amount of money that's going to go out to buy them out. As Steve said, they're going to want a three-year contract to move in to the area. And I've talked to a couple people in other towns that have town managers, and they said that they started out with an assistant and then worked, once that assistant was working out for them, moved it into a manager's position. So, they didn't start out with a manager, they started out with an assistant first and then worked it into a manager, and I think it was a five-year period in which they worked with that. So, I feel the same as Steve that it might be a little bit too much of a jump to go with the manager.
Well, I, I do agree that there are risks involved. I, I do personally believe that going to a town administrator as a stepping stone could work. However, the difficulty with that is, a town manager is statutorily defined. A town administrator is whatever the five members of the board decide it is, which can be problematic getting by people to agree on specific duties for a specific person. So, that's, that's kind of where I stand on it.
Glenn.
Glenn had a.
Raise your hand.
I mean.
Thank you. So, Glenn Beatty, all I was going to bring up was kind of what Steve and Rob had brought up. And also, with the town manager, you're right, they do have specific duties from state statutes. But a lot of that's removing what the select board does and the say-so that our select board has. These guys we can kind of pull aside, talk to, we get the choice to elect them, they're not here on a contract for three, five years, surely not for $80,000, or which I think you're going to spend a lot more, to pull somebody in to do this job. An administrator, which may be tough to narrow down their specific duties, at least you're not bound to by the state statutes. I would hope that you might be able to work out an agreement for job descriptions of your, of an administrator. But I'm not sure if the people didn't come to the meeting that you held with the, I think it was one of the, VL, yeah, Vermont League of Cities and Towns, that the, the town managers get a lot of rights, and there's just nothing you can do. If you get the wrong one, it is going to be a boatload of money, or as these guys said, three years a minimum, it's going to be tough to deal with. You can't just fire them. The select board may think they can, but they can't. So, I'd be very careful of the manager.
We might be able to fire, but who knows what the cost of the lawyers and all that's going to be? I mean, that could be astronomical.
The, the end of the contract will come out long before you ever have enough to get rid of them, for sure. And with a nice severance pack.
Okay. Bill, let Bill talk there.
Is this on the warning by, from the selectman? Or should we put on the decision?
Select board.
The selectman decided to put this on. I take it that the selectman, I'm not even, and they're.
Then, right back there? Oh, you want to talk?
In answer to your question, it is on the warning as a result of a non-binding motion from last year's town meeting, when a resident did in fact put it before the floor, and it struck the select board to come back with the information about a town manager and/or administrator. We put a committee together who produced the report that's circulating around here. And with that, we had a meeting with VLTC after they finished their work, and we're now putting it back on the floor, which is where it needs to be, to, to come to some kind of resolution.
Hello, my name is, whoops, Cindy, and I'm wondering, could we not just hire, since funding seems to be coming from grants these days, couldn't we just hire a professional grant writer, which would be, you know, as we need it? Would that not be more efficient?
I don't know. I think that's more of a, you want to answer?
We certainly could, but grant writing is, while it's one of the problems that we are facing, one of the challenges we are facing, it's not the only one by any stretch. And I think, I think we have to be careful of trying to bring in outside help to fill stopgaps rather than trying to build a coherent form of decision-making.
Do you want to add one thing? Go ahead.
So, basically, my CRS just kicked in. Oh, it seems as if like people are really concerned about the length of time that the town manager would be serving and how much they would be getting paid and what, I mean, I guess that what they can do and can't do is pretty much cut and dried. But is there a limitation as to how long we can have a manager? Do we have to have them for three years? Do we have to pay them $80,000? I'm, I'm under the impression that that's something that we would discuss with any people that are interested in doing the job, and we can basically say, this is what we're willing to offer, are you willing to take it? Are we actually, do we have to do these things? Is it a three-year contract mandatory? Or is it something that we just offer this person as part of the job, or how does that work?
But it's not mandatory. So, I mean, if we did get somebody that, and if we have a local group of people that are also involved in the hiring process, it seems that that would help us determine whether it's going to be a good fit or not, and also, if they want the job, they take it for a year or whatever. I mean, we're in charge, not them, right?
There is various kinds of lies training, there's college degrees in and out. The, the problem is finding someone that's qualified to do the whole job, and unfortunately, those are the compensation rates that are generally agreed upon by cities and towns all across the country.
And nobody said that there's just a three-year contract. We're saying that if somebody moves from out of town to this area to do this job, they're not going to want to leave 12 months later to go back to wherever they came from. They're going to want more.
You don't think there's anyone in this area that's capable of doing this job?
No.
You don't? Just asking.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a pretty, pretty poignant statement from a select board.
Those questions have been asked of VLCT, and the candidates that they are, that they are wording forward to Vermont Cities and Towns are not from within Vermont.
Okay, Craig, and then, go ahead. Can you speak loud, Craig?
I can, sure.
Loud.
If you want, I was just, I was simply going to say that in the last eight or 10 years, 10 years anyway.
I was just going to say that in the last 10 years, the town has received over $900,000, almost a million dollars in FEMA money for tropical stormy rain. We've also received more than a million dollars in grant money in that period of time. Those grants were applied for, they were closed out. It is very difficult to, and costly, to close out grants. More grants are available. It's not just a matter of writing for them, it's a matter of justifying them, it's a matter of having a plan and a need for them. You don't just chase grants because they're available, you have a targeted need. Long-term planning has not been our strong suit in the last number of years in targeting those grants. They are available, but they're very difficult to close out. Takes three, four, or five years sometimes. With the $600,000 for Valley Care, it's on a community housing grant, we'll be doing that for 30 years, closing it out every year with accounting and auditing. It gets expensive to do that, and with changes in personnel, it becomes cumbersome, time-consuming and labor-consuming. I've been doing a lot of the jobs that, that a town manager or administrator would be doing, town administrator would be doing, for almost half the price. My job is, as probably most of you know, anything that comes through the door, and I work specifically for the select board. I do a little bit of everything for them. If you look to hire a town manager, also going to be looking to renovate, it's a small issue, but you're going to be looking to renovate parts of this building, you're going to open up into grandfathering, some of the issues that this building has, there is no office space here. And for those of you that have visited with me, the desk that I have downstairs in the dining room is one that I bought and one that I'm currently using with a phone that doesn't ring. If you hire somebody for $80,000, they're going to want a space of their own. And you're either going to go find another building in town to rent, or you're going to have to do some remodeling in this building as well. So, there is that cost.
The reason for the citizens to assist the select board was personalities are important. So, you made the point about an individual being on contract. You want them to meet with the fire department, the highway department, the select board, all the different groups and committees, to know that that's a personality that everyone can get along with, in addition to the VLTC vetting them for education, experience, and the like. So, it's a process, but some of the efficiencies may end up saving us money in the long run.
I just want to try and summarize what I'm hearing. This is hopefully no new information. Most of us agree that the select board is working very hard and also trying to make a living somewhere else, and we all agree that you need help. So, this particular article is talking about trying to get someone to help you. But the way it's worded, the legislature has made a list of what this helper can do and can't do. And I'm hearing that maybe that list is going to cause more problems than it's worth. And what we're deciding is, is the job description as stated by the legislature going to help Townsend, or is it just going to make all our lives more miserable? Is that what we're talking about here? We're talking about the level of, the level of help, let's put it that way, the level of help that will be introduced into the town.
Say it again, want me to repeat it?
We're actually talking about the level of help that's going to come into town. Do we actually need to go to the full extent by statute of what a town manager is allowed to do, which I believe, give me glasses. I compare, or I can actually read straight from the statute that says, "To perform all duties now conferred upon, by law, upon the select board, except that he or she shall not prepare tax bills, sign orders on the general fund of the town, call special or annual meetings, lay out highways, establish and lay out public parks, make assessments, award damages, act as a member of the Board of Civil Authority, nor make appointments to fill vacancies, which the select board is now authorized by law to fill. But he or she shall, in all matters herein accepted, render the select board such assistance as it shall require." That's, that's the extent of the duties of a town manager. A town administrator, on the other hand, is, again, it's at the discretion of the select board to come up with that job description. And there have, we have looked at, and I know there are multiple different types of job descriptions that are running around for the administration, town administrators, that are less structured, they're not contained in statute, and they have a little bit more flexibility. So, what you all need to decide is how much help do we need?
You've already spoken twice. Bill, have you spoken twice?
I've asked twice.
The, the rule is you speak twice to a motion, because we could go on forever.
May I ask another question?
Yeah, you could, okay. We'll just let people talk, is that what we want? It's up to you guys.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. No, let, let Bill talk.
I'd like to give the selectman's position on this one motion.
I'm sorry, what?
I'd like to give the selectman's position on motions announced there.
As a collective or as an individual?
A collection or an individual? Bill, Bill asked again what the select board thinks, the, Bill asked whether, what the select board thinks about the motion that's on the floor, not the amendment before or whatever, the motion on the floor. And then she asked whether or not she wanted the collective board or individuals. And he doesn't care. He wants to know what the board thinks. Board, want to say anything?
Of course.
Of course.
So, we'll go down the line. I'm not in favor of a town manager.
I am a no vote for a town manager.
I'm not in favor of a town manager either.
I am in favor of a town manager.
Bill? Call the question. Bill has the floor? Bill has the floor, call the question. That's a, requires a two-third vote to close debate. However, if there's no objection to closing debate, is there any objection to closing? Did you object? Yes or no? Got what?
Want to be closed?
We're closing debate and going to take the vote.
On a manager?
On the main motion.
On a manager, not an assistant?
On the main motion. The main motion says nothing about an assistant. The main motion says town manager.
So, this vote would, would stop?
They would just vote, go ahead, it would vote.
On this article for a county manager?
Yes, correct.
Not inhibit us from having?
It just.
We can discuss it about the town assistant.
No, well, we're just talking about what a town manager do and the town assistant. The main motion talks about a town manager. That's it. Do we want to hire a town manager? Do we want to hire a town manager, paraphrase, up to 80 grand, with the V L C helping, plus benefits, and a citizen? That's the main motion. The question's been called. Is there any objection to closing the debate?
One more?
Yes.
You just, I think you just...
I'll read, I'll read it correctly in a moment.
Whether, if we close discussion on this now, that also closes off discussion on any kind of town administrator, because there is no other article or motion.
Right, well, we shouldn't be talking about a town administrator.
That's what, I think he was asking.
Oh, well, they, yes, they were just, yes, I allow it to...
There would be no more discussion about town administrator.
Sorry if I confused everybody. I let the conversation free-range. I don't want to be up here with an iron fist. Okay? So, any objection to closing debate?
Objection.
Objection, okay, right there. So, it's, the question's been called. We need a two-thirds vote to close debate. We have to divide the House, so first, we're going to try to do hands. If not, we have to do a ballot. So, all those in favor of closing debate and voting immediately on the motion, please raise your hand to close debate. Yeah, this is going to be hard. Should I do a, should I do a ballot? Should we do a ballot unless we count everybody's hand? Going to have to do a ballot, it's going to be close. All those, all those against closing debate, raise their hands. Yeah, that's going to be real close. So let's, let's, if there's no objection, I'd like to do a, a, yes, sir. Wait, yes, sir. What?
I just think there's still a lot of confusion about if you close debate on this, if you close the motion, can, is there still going to be a discussion about?
No.
That ends all discussion?
We move on to Article 7, 8, move.
So there is no amendments to be made about whether we...
No, we close debate, I'm going to put the question to the people, you're going to vote yes or no, and then we're going to move on. It's over.
The reason there's not, the reason this wasn't divided into two questions, as in a town manager slash town administrator, was because the select board does not need voter approval to act, to employ a town administrator. We can just do that. A town manager, we did need voter approval to do, which is why the question was written the way the question was presented. Okay?
Okay, enough. The question's been called. Er. Er. Okay, so, what?
Point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
What? Point of order, what's the, what's the question?
Your, your body language and the excitement of trying to get this thing wrapped up, you can move on.
What I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. What I'm trying to do is keep the town on the straight and narrow. That's my job, and we're kind of getting off track. I allow some leeway, however, sometimes the town takes advantage of my leeway. If we want to move forward in town meeting, and let me follow Robert's rules to the T, I shall. However, when I'm up here, I like to allow the town's will to come out. But when the question is called, the question is called. There is no further discussion, and I apologize if I'm getting upset, but that's the way the town meeting is supposed to be run. Or we could be here forever, as I sit here and ramble on and on and on. Okay, there's a, there's a, the question has been called and it requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will close debate and will immediately move to vote on the main motion. A no vote continues the debate. The ballot box is now open. We already did that?
Yes.
Okay, ballot box will be closed in one, two, three. Ballot box is now closed. Have the results of the vote to close debate. And first, let me say, I'm sorry, I'm a hothead. I had red hair once. It's gone now, but I apologize, lost my cool. Sorry about that. Okay, I'll try to remain calm. It's a lo, it's a long day. Okay, there was 87 votes to end debate on Article 7. There was no vote of 18, and yes votes to close debate, it's 69. 87 times .666666, right, two-thirds, equals 57.9, so that would be 58 votes in order to close debate. We got 69 yet, debate is closed, and we're moving right to the vote. Okay, we have a motion on the floor that we'll be voting on, and the motion says-ish, "To instruct the town of Townsend to take advantage of the provisions of Chapter 37 of Title 24 of the Vermont statutes and authorize the select board to employ a town manager at a compensation level not to exceed $80,000 plus benefits, and utilize the Vermont League of Cities and Towns in the search for said manager, as well as instruct the select board to appoint a group of citizens to assist in said search for town manager." Okay? A yes vote passes that motion. Yes, sir.
I call for it to be passed.
Okay? A yes, hang on, let me, let me finish. Yes, I agree. A yes vote passes the motion, which means we, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, that means we move to a town manager position. A no vote defeats the motion. Everybody understands that? Yes? No question about yes or no? Okay. I have two people that want a paper ballot. In order to have a paper ballot, we need seven. We got seven? One, two, three, four, five, six, beautiful, good. Okay, a yes vote will pass the motion, which then employs a town manager. A no vote defeats this. No questions? The ballot box is now open. The ballot box, any other votes? Going once, going twice? The ballot box is now closed.
Park is...
Okay, Article 7, we have the results of the election. To see if the town will authorize the select board to employ a town manager, there were 26 yes votes and 61 no votes. The motion is defeated. How many total? It was 87 total. Okay, moving along. Article 8. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $537,482 to pay for the running expenses and liability of the town, of which $411,928 is to be raised by taxes." I believe that's pages eight, 10 through 13. I want to entertain a motion.
No motion.
Okay, let's see, have to find it, just a second. To see if the town, I make a motion to appropriate $537,482, of which $412,227 are to be raised in taxes.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $537,482 to pay for the running expenses and liabilities of the town, of which $412,227 is to be raised by taxes." Discussion, and the maker of the motion was...
There is a handout both up here on the stage and backed by the voter checklist that actually details these numbers. It is a change from what's in the town report.
Oh, it's okay.
$200.
It's $299 more. Discussion. Seeing no discussion?
Uh, so...
Yes, sir.
412 or whatever it is, it's right back. Where's the rest of it coming from?
It's all on the sheet. It's revenue.
Revenue.
Revenue from?
Revenue from...
Town clerk's office?
Town clerk's office.
State payments to the town, state payments, road taxes, uh, multiple areas.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion. Their motion on the floor, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $537,482 to pay for the running expenses and liabilities of the town, of which $412,412,227 is to be raised by taxes." A yes vote passes the motion, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it, the ayes do have it, and the motion passes. Article 9. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $555,090 for the running expenses and liabilities of maintaining the town roads, of which $401,546 is to be raised in taxes."
"I make a motion to appropriate $555,090 for the running expenses and liabilities of maintaining the towns and roads, of which $401,351 is to be raised by taxes."
Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Yes, sir? Microphone.
I note on the highway equipment, we're setting aside $50,000 as a reserve for greater. But we also currently have about $717,000 in other reserves currently, only, I think, $71,000 of which is actually classified as committed funds by the outside auditor. So the question is, should we really be setting aside $50,000 in taxes that we're then going to park in a savings account for seven years until we have enough to get the $350,000 for a new greater?
The revenue that you're talking about, it's sitting in surplus, may or may not actually be cash. And the reason I say that, it's a, it's a fund balance, and that has come about over the years for multiple entities when taxes were not raised for monies that the voters approved. And the prime example was the last time we ordered a dump truck. The voters approved the purchase of that truck, but the select board made a decision not to raise the taxes. When they don't collect the tax revenues, since you as voters approved that expense, that money came out of the general fund for that year and went into the highway, into that fund that you're speaking about. So it was never raised, but it shows as a surplus sitting in the highway piece, which is part of that $700,000. And there's more, more of that type money. We use the FEMA money, for example, multiple years as revenue. It did not come in, so because the highways are fully funded, that revenues got swept out of the, out of the general fund to cover their liabilities. So that isn't necessarily all cash sitting in the bank that could be applied toward this new greater.
One more? Make it a good one.
Let me direct your attention to page 16 of the report, which is Town Reserve Funds and Balances, and the current amount there is $717,804. The outside auditor report, which we don't have here, but is available downstairs, if you haven't gotten it, shows a, actually a cumulative balance of $866,000 and some odd amount. So essentially, yes, we do have it, and it is monies that, some of which have been set aside for such things as equipment for the highway department, $29,000. There's also money set aside for the fire department. But the only ones that are specifically designated that can't be changed are the common fund and the Mosley Fund, I believe. I think that totals the 71.
No, the fire department funds cannot be touched. Those are separate entities, that's toward the new pumper, which we will get to shortly. The special funds that we have set aside specifically in special project is going for a bridge that's going to be put up on East Hill Road in the next two or three months. Excuse me, West Hill, yes, not East Hill. The Stone Arch Bridges, for example, that's money that the Historic Society is going to be used to preservation of the bridges. We can't touch any of those other than possibly the R D A G money. We can't, the Lister money is for reappraisal, we can't touch that, that's set aside for them. I'm not sure where we would pull, be able to pull the money from for the greater.
You can't touch the sewer fund or the sidewalk fund. You could touch the equipment fund, which is now in other funds, it can only be spent for what?
For what they were designated, right. The most, or the, the R D A G would be the only thing that we could possibly do and apply to that particular project.
And the highway equipment fund, the equipment purchase fund, which is $41,000.
Yeah, we were talking about by the motor here, so that's, that's...
Okay, further discussion? Seeing no other discussion? We have a motion on the floor to see if the town will vote to appropriate $555,090 for the running expenses and liabilities of maintaining the town roads, of which $401,351 is to be raised by taxes. A yes vote will pass.
Correction. $111,351.
What did you add? I have 401.
She read a different number.
The motion is called...
What was the ma, the maker of the motion?
Captain, Mr. Nick, motion, she has 31.
401. 401. She said 401.
She said 351.
She didn't say 351.
She said 401, 351.
Right, 401, 351 is what she said.
Right.
Right. Okay. Who said 11? No, the answer's no. There's a motion on the floor to see if the vote will raise, will, the town will vote to appropriate $555,000,090 for the running expenses and liabilities of maintaining the town roads, of which $401,351 is to be raised by taxes. A yes vote passes it, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it, the motion passes. Article 10. "To see if the town will vote to raise funds by taxation for the purchase of a new highway department pickup truck, and if so, how much?" Yes, motion in the back.
I think the town should purchase... I just did it wrong.
You did it wrong? Yeah, you did it wrong. Anyways. I'll go first. This is supposed to be a beautiful dance. Well, I just got my feet stepped on. Neither one of us can dance.
Um, the town, in the article, it has, it said the town's, the tax, the...
Hold on, we need a motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor not to...
No.
No.
Give me, give me a motion.
I make a motion to buy a one-ton for the town of Townsend Highway.
No, 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 no.
No?
Okay, okay. No, tell me what you said before at the pre-town meeting. Say it again.
At pre-town meeting. The town has a pickup truck listed in here under the warning, and they...
No. Okay, okay. Yes, just, tell me your motion. You said that X amount of, X amount of dollars...
No.
Who made a motion?
You read the motion.
No, that's not, that can't be the motion, because there's no amount of money or anything like that in it. The motion needs to be bigger than that. Say, tell, Kurt, just say, tell the motion, say the motion of the truck and the amount and everything you said before, and then we'll move forward. You'll see what will happen in a second.
The motion I want?
Yes.
Or the town wants?
No, that you...
Okay, all right, all right. The town needs, "I make a motion, the town should buy an F-550 or equal with equipment instead of..."
With, no, not instead of.
Okay, with equipment.
With equipment.
For a price of between $75,000 and $80,000.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. That motion's been moved and seconded. As moderator, I am now going to say that this motion is out of order. Okay? Because the warning warns a pickup truck. I close my eyes and I think of my little teeny wimpy pickup truck that I drive, okay? And the F-550 with equipment is not what I see as a pickup truck. And one of the things that you have to do is stick with the subject and object of the warning. It says pickup truck. Is this a pickup truck? I, as moderator, am saying no. Okay? So that motion is now, in my opinion, is not germane and should not be accepted. However... Okay? However, the moderator's decision has now been challenged. So I'm not the one that's going to make this decision, the town is, because I believe I'm here for the town. Okay? So, the moderator's decision has been challenged. So the way this works is, shall the decision of the moderator be sustained, is the question. Okay? There's going to be a yes or no vote in a second. I'm supposed to explain it. I think I just did. Everybody understands why I don't think that this is germane. And now we can have discussion on whether or not this is germane. You could speak to it, Kurt, on why you think this is a pickup truck or whatever. Everybody's only allowed to speak once, and then I'm supposed to summarize it, and then we take a vote. That's the way, if, if you want to challenge the moderator's decision, it works. So now, we're going to have a discussion on whether or not we think this is germane. Kurt?
You want me to explain why we need it?
Yeah, yeah, you're... Yeah, yeah, you could do whatever you, well, it's supposed to be in the germaneness.
Instead of a pick, we are replacing the vehicle we have now, which is a small, ton and a half truck. This truck has a sander on it, it has a reversible one-way plow. It can actually plow a route in case one of our big dump trucks fail or break down or something like that. I don't want anything more than what we have. It's just a basic truck with a plow and a sander on it and a dump body. It also, we have, it rakes for us in the summertime, it applies our liquid chloride to the roads to keep our dust control down and to, keep our dust control down and keep the roads hard and preserves the roads. That's all the town really needs, is that truck right there.
Okay, so that's kind of the explanation why. My comments still stand. Yes, sir?
But that truck that Kurt was driving gives an F-550.
That's a big truck. No. It's a lot bigger than a one-fifty or a two-fifty.
Right, it's exactly what we have right now.
But you're asking for a bigger truck than what you have now?
No, what we have now is an F-550 or equivalent. That's what I want. The town needs, yes.
The question is, the problem is, the warning was worded wrong. It should have just said truck. But because it says pickup truck, if I was a towns person out over there, I would think you guys are buying a pickup truck. And so that's why I'm saying no to this. But again, the town can overrule me. Yes, sir? Loud.
So I'm just going to say this is germane because the highway department would not be asking for a pickup truck, and I think we all understand that it would be a one-ton F-550 to meet the need.
Did everybody hear that? Yes, okay. I have to do what I have to do, but, okay, okay. So any other discussion about the germaneness of an F-550 as a pickup truck? Okay, now I'm supposed to summarize. Do I need to? Everybody gets it, right? Everybody gets it? Now I'm supposed to summarize. Okay, then we take, then we take a vote. So this is going to be confusing, because a yes vote defeats the motion. It's backward, it's confusing. So, the question is whether or not the moderator's decision will be sustained. My decision is that this motion is out of order. So a yes vote makes it out of order or defeats it. It's, a yes vote is a negative result. Does that make sense? And a no vote allows us to move forward, okay? And then we can discuss the truck and then vote on the truck. But you guys decided that a pickup truck is what this is, and then if the lawyers, if somebody challenges it, it's not me, it's the town, which is the way it should be, okay? So a yes vote, the moderator's correct, and we, and the motion is out of order. A no vote, we move forward. Everybody understand? Okay? All those in favor of sustaining the moderator's decision, please say aye. All those opposed to the moderator's decision, please say aye. Damn, man, you guys really? Okay, so, the motion stands. I have been overruled by the town. There is now a motion on the floor to purchase, the motion is to purchase an F-550, an F-550 or equivalent truck with equipment for a cost of seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars. That's correct? That's correct. Discussion, please. Let's discuss the truck. What? Seventy-five to eighty thousand. Yes?
Two things. What's going on with the truck that you already have? Like, what year is it? What reason are you getting rid of it? And number two, why couldn't you take the equipment off the existing truck, like the plow and the sander and stuff, and put it on the new truck?
Okay, hang on, you, right, okay. So the question is, tell us about the current truck, year, problems, et cetera. And then the second part of the question is, why can't we move stuff from one truck to another?
Okay, the truck we have now is a two thousand and twelve. It has almost seventy-eight thousand miles on it. It's out of warranty, which you'd think makes no big difference, but everything with computers and stuff today makes a huge difference on cost repairs. To take the equipment off the truck, this is before trade-in. If you can sell a truck turnkey with a plow and a sander, now the plow's not the issue. The sander is worn, it needs new augers and bearings and chains. You'd have to go through the whole thing if you replace it onto a new truck. But with a turnkey truck on a trade-in, you're going to get a lot more money. This is before trade-in. So the cost of a new truck is between seventy-five and eighty thousand dollars. You trade in your old truck, it will not be, you will not incur that whole cost of seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars.
So why are you asking for seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars?
Because that's what a new truck costs, and we don't know what a trade-in value is on it right now. And we're going to have to take a loan out for it, which we are, not this way, but when we normally take a loan out for it, we always go through the state and you don't know what you're going to get. So you go for the higher, and then you don't use all the money that they ask for. And if we did buy this truck before, before we get the purchase price on it, we have to see what we got for a trade-in for our vehicles to see what we, because it varies a lot through the whole winter, the mileage you put on and whatnot. We can't get a definite answer right now.
Further discussion? Truck, truck, truck? Yes, sir?
Are you going to be able to buy a truck and a plow and a sander for seventy-eight thousand dollars?
Yes.
Wow. Well, you see pickup trucks for sixty thousand dollars and they're only.
The state got the Dodge bid last time, and it doesn't matter what manufacturer I have, because I have no loyalty toward any of them. If I piggyback out to the state, it's much cheaper.
Much cheaper for the town to buy equipment through the state bid program, because they buy so many vehicles.
You see F-150s for fifty, sixty thousand?
Yeah, no, no. But there's a reason why it's not as high as he thinks it's supposed to be, that's all. Okay, any other discussion? Yes, sir?
In the same, as, same issue we had before, we've actually bracketed an amount. So if the maker of the motion would accept a friendly amendment, that that's up to, change that to be up to eighty thousand?
Will you accept that, or you want to vote on that amendment? Up to is okay? Who's the seconder? Who seconded it? No, no, who seconded the original motion? They have to agree. Chris? Chris, you seconded. Do you agree with the change? Okay, so you understand the motion now says F-550 or equivalent with equipment up to eighty thousand dollars. Okay, that's the motion. Continued discussion? Yes, sir?
One quick question. Where does this leave us in very close future of needing a bigger truck, one of the dump trucks, as far as the exchange out and buying, purchasing of another truck? Where are we out of our truck schedule? Because usually we get a new truck every three years, and are we going to be next year needing a new dump truck on top of the one-ton or higher efficiency?
We are so, we, we, we are on equipment replacement schedule. We are way out of our equipment replacement schedule. We have one truck now with a warranty on it. That's the last ton truck we bought. We have a two thousand and eleven, a two thousand and twelve, and a two thousand and fifteen dump trucks. The two thousand and eleven should be replaced.
The two thousand and twelve has the most miles on it. Two thousand and twelve has the most miles on it for big dump trucks right now, which is over seventy thousand miles. Two thousand and eleven is right close to it, because that second dump truck goes to West Townsend for its power route, which adds up to more miles. We are out on our equipment replacement schedule. Our loader should have been replaced. It will be this coming spring, I hope. And our grader last year, when I mentioned the loader, should be replaced. That's a big nut to crack, but that's why we're putting in fifty thousand dollars into the general fund. That has seventy-two hundred hours on it right now, and that should have been replaced. When Kim was here, I had replacement costs and trade-in values when we had, came up to the, went before, right before the town meeting, to see where we were in all of our equipment. When you buy a piece of equipment, it falls off, then it kind of levels out. Then after a while, I had it all written down on numbers, and then it drops right off and falls down. And now with a grader, to be proactive, we should have got rid of it and get a new one. But we're going to be reactive now. I just don't want to keep throwing, start throwing money, good money into a used piece of equipment. But we'll have to put that off for a couple of years too, until we accrue some money for that. But we should get a big dump truck next year, and this truck should be replaced this year, because that is our, we use that truck all year long, more than any other vehicle, the little truck.
Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion on the floor to see if the town will vote to raise funds for an F-550 or equivalent truck with equipment not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. Right? Okay, a yes vote gets us a new truck, a no vote defeats the new truck. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no? I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. I want a ride in that pickup truck. Okay, article nine eleven. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise funds by taxation to contract for law enforcement services, and if so, how much? Guys want to make mo, is this a motion? No? Motion? I need a motion. Want to make a motion? Oh, Craig will.
To see if the town will authorize the select board contract for law enforcement services in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the next year.
It's been moved and seconded to see if the town will ra, vote to raise funds by taxation to contract for law enforcement services for twenty thousand dollars. Discussion, sir?
How many hours a week will twenty thousand dollars buy us?
How many hours a week will twenty thousand dollars buy us?
It depends on who we contract with. State police, that's going to be approximately five and three-quarters per week. And the sheriff, I have to do the math. Uh, duh, 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 twenty thousand, about four per, no, that's going to be right. Fifty-one. Just for that amount of money, we'd be able to have three hundred and ninety-two hours of the sheriff's department, which would equal. Thirty, yeah, thirty-two and three-quarters hours per month.
Yeah, how much was the state police?
About six, about six hours a week.
Six hours a week, and that's twenty-four, twenty-five hours a month?
Six times five is thirty, so twenty-five to thirty hours for the state police, and thirty, no. Twenty-five hours for state and thirty-two for. Per month-ish. That was just rough math. Yes, ma'am?
Who decides whether we get the state or the sheriff's department? Is that a?
It's always been left to the select board to make the decision as to who to write the contract with.
Further discussion? Yep.
Chris Lackney, I just want to say, a few years ago, a friend of mine had her ex-husband and son be murdered. I'm sure you remember that. And this last October, just down the street from me, we had a double homicide and arson. One of my, excuse me, responsibilities at Grace Cottage is to address security and safety issues of our employees and patients. I have been told by the state police that if we needed help at the hospital, it could take us up to an hour before they arrive. In fact, we've seen that many, many times taken. So I think what we're talking about in terms of the amount of hours certainly isn't enough. And I'd also like to see if we can invite two people to speak who are now towns residents. Doug DeVillo, who's our CEO, who will be a town resident in March. Yeah, and the deputy sheriff we have here today. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Right back here.
If I may, just make a point. Grace Cottage Hospital is not a tax-paying entity in town. Grace Cottage Hospital has every right to contract independently with the sheriff's department. That was mentioned at the meeting, the law enforcement meeting. It is not the town of Townsend's responsibility to provide police protection for the hospital. If we're going to provide police, police protection, you have to look at it as for the residents.
Okay, further, further discussion, second time, go. It's okay.
Personally, I've had to call the state police, who are, we're now contracted with, to come for a problem. And I was told that they might get there, they might not, maybe the next day. I also have spoken with someone else who was helping out with the domestic dispute, where they called the state police and they didn't show up until the next day. And frankly, if we're going to pay twenty thousand dollars for that kind of service, I think we shouldn't have any.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, you're next, go ahead.
When we met, when we met with Keith Clark here about a year ago, stuff like domestic assault, they don't even cover. They want to do traffic stops only, write tickets. They don't want to see you about domestic assaults. They don't want to see you simple assaults. They don't want to see break-ins. None of that stuff they wanted to cover. They wanted to cover basically traffic stops. And it brought up the question, when we had the problem next door here with a lot of drugs going in and out, in the sheriff's department, when we're sitting, sitting on the common, watching the activity go in and out of that place, and we brought up the factor of, why can't you do something? And they basically said that that's not what we're doing for you guys, for the contract that is written. And when we met with them over there, when we had the, the meeting there about law enforcement over here, he kind of told us, oh, well, we could work it into the contract. Well, when he met with us individually, that was not what was reiterated to us. It was traffic only, so.
Vote it down. Okay, further discussion? Dave, you're going to do the last one? Go ahead, second time? Mr. Cook? Yeah.
What would we get for this contract? Would that, would that first have to be negotiated? Whoever we decide on? Would they do drug trafficking or domestic violence or?
I just told you that when we met with him, he said that we didn't want that, or that they weren't going to provide that.
So this twenty thousand dollars that we're going, we may approve, will, in no case will it cover that stuff?
No, that's not the case. The, the state police will respond to any, any of those calls. That's what, at the meeting that we had over at Grace Cottage, that was made very clear, that if we call, we don't know when the response is going to come, because they now are further away, but that they will respond.
And the sheriff?
I don't know. I, we haven't had a contract with them in a couple of years.
Well, you just said that the sheriff doesn't want to cover domestic assaults and.
Okay, hold on. Are we, are, do we, well, I know, I know, hang on. That's what I was about to do. If there's no objection, because he's not a Townsend resident, we do have a deputy here that would like to say a few things. Is there any objection to him speaking? There is an objection.
I have an objection. We don't have the state police here to speak as well. So we did have a law enforcement night where they both were there to speak.
Okay. Okay, so my objection is, my, if there's no objection, is overruled, so we can have a vote if you want to let him speak. Do we want to have a vote? Yes? Okay, requires two-thirds majority to allow him to speak. All those in favor of allowing him to speak first, please raise your hand. Okay? Those against? I believe it's two-thirds majority to allow him to speak. Would you agree? Agree? Okay. Sir, where'd the microphone go? Oh, you got it, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Captain Mark Anderson. I'm the chief deputy at the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office. I've heard several questions. I will speak to some, actually for the reasons you've mentioned. I'm not going to make any. Actually, for the reasons you've mentioned, I'm not going to make any reference to what the state police will or will not do, because I don't speak for their agency. I would direct anybody with questions about the state police's service to Lieutenant Anthony French. He was at the meeting, the law enforcement meeting that we had over in the Dutton Gym about a month ago. One question I heard was about the services that we provide. All of our services for policing are provided under contract, which means you tell us what you want, you tell us what you don't want. The state of Vermont, if you do not have a law enforcement agency, for example, the town of, let's say Halifax. Halifax does not have a police agency. The Vermont State Police are responsible under Vermont law for providing a service. What level of service is going to be determined by the state police? There's no statutory definition other than for them to provide search and rescue and for them to provide the general policing of the state. So, that's what all of us as taxpayers in the state of Vermont, that, that's what we pay for. Contracting with the sheriff's office is a supplemental service. You dictate what you want. Our contracts in the past with the town of Townsend have been for traffic enforcement. So, with reference to the select board member, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir. With, with reference to his comment, we were providing traffic enforcement because that's what we were contracted for. To go outside the scope of our contract, we do have provisions to accomplish that. However, drug investigations can be extremely costly. So, the question is, do you want to spend money on an investigation? A burglary investigation, for example, could be upwards of forty hours of time. It could be as many as six hours. A homicide could be hundreds of hours. So, where do you want to put your money? That's the question. A lot of, a lot of towns that we work with, they often say, we want you to do quality-of-life calls such as, I need a VIN verification for my vehicle. My neighbor took my garden hose, and I just want it returned. We'll do things all the way up to domestic assaults and, as well as deceased individuals investigating those things. We do those in several towns. In fact, right now, we have a twenty-hour-a-day service in the town of Vernon, where we provide 100% law enforcement coverage. So, we are capable of building an agreement with the town of Townsend if the town wanted to enter into an agreement. It's just a question of how do you want to spend the money? And where do you want us to work versus where do you want the state police to work?
Crystal. Thank you. Don't go far, though.
Christina. So, my name's Crystal again. I live here in Townsend. Some of you heard me speak a month ago at the community event that involved law enforcement, just as an, as an educational opportunity for people that were in the audience. The gentleman that spoke earlier, who spoke about Grace Cottage and our own ability to hire our own law enforcement is correct. We certainly have that ability. He's also correct that we don't pay taxes as a corporate entity in this town. The point here is a little bit bigger than that, in my opinion, so I'm just going to share my elbow with you because I have two. So, here's my first one. I'm asking this community, if we as a community feel that we have enough coverage for safety and security for ourselves and our grandparents, our parents, our children, our grandchildren, to me, the amount that was quoted is flat from last year to this year, as I understand it. Is that correct, Chair? That's correct. The $20,000 is the same that we paid last year. So, I, I'm just curious, I'm just asking, I guess I'm a bit begging, but I'm asking you all to think about what we have here currently for law enforcement and whether that meets our needs as a growing community and how you bring new families into this community when there's five hours a month, maybe, of response from our local hire who we currently have. How do you do that? It's twen- okay, it's twenty hours a month, five hours a week. Right. So, it, it, I guess it's just a point of consideration, but, but if it were up to me, I would vote that we have more coverage here, not for patrolling in traffic stops, but to keep us all rather safe in our homes at night, you know, and secure. Thank you.
Kathy's going to speak for a sec. The board's got some things to say.
I just would like to point out that we did in fact have a contract, full-time, for a full-time deputy with sheriff's department in 2000, would have been FY15. The contract was signed for, at a cost not to exceed $55,000. That full-time coverage, we had a specific deputy assigned to Townsend. And the coverage that we did receive for the first couple of months was absolutely superb. There was no, we, we had help with our, our parking situation, which we have difficulty with in the center of town. We had someone to investigate a lot of the types of, of things that you're talking about. But that officer was injured, like, two months into the contract. And we were already under contract for that full twelve months. We ended up paying out that contract, but we did not end up getting all of the services that we originally contracted for when we entered into a full-time forty, forty-hour-per-week contract. So, I just, things also happen as well. You all need to be aware of the fact that even doing forty hours a week, these, these, regardless whether it's state police or the, or the deputies from the sheriff, are not going to be here 24/7. It's just, we're going, you set an amount of money that we're going to contract for, and we can word that contract any way you'd like for whatever services you'd like, but at the same time, it's still not going to give you 100% round-the-clock coverage.
Everyone wants to say something?
I got a question for the sheriff. Are you, after 11 o'clock at night, do you have a dispatcher?
Could you restate the question, sir?
I say, after 11 o'clock at night, do you have a dispatch?
Yes, sir, we have a 24-hour dispatch.
I know there was a while down here, they didn't have no dispatch.
Approximately three years ago, we developed a 24-hour dispatch, which was able to satisfy a lot of different concerns for a lot of different people. Took us moving resources around and developing that system. There was a period where we did not have an overnight dispatcher.
And beyond all of that, this law enforcement you people want, Grace Cottage Hospital, I live here in Townsend, it cost me the same dollar to go to this hospital over here as it does somebody from New Haven or Jamaica or wherever. We lose, all the value of that land at the hospital comes off our tax roll. It don't come off New Fens, it don't come off Jamaicas or anybody else's, in the same way with the high school over here. There's over a million dollars of property value that we get nothing for.
Okay, Will?
I just wanted to clarify one point that Crystal made. The hours that we contract for are not for response, they are for patrol.
But they could be, is what he said. Okay. Any further discussion? Yeah? In the back? I see it. What, no further discussion?
No.
No what?
In answer to the, to the patrol versus, versus response. The state police, what we currently have, the, the state police are required to respond outside of the, what we contract for. Right now, that, that five and three-quarters hours or whatever it is per week is just for additional patrols, not for normal-type law enforcement piece. Normal-type law enforcement that we're talking about is mandated to the state police to do by state law.
That's correct.
Yes. So, if we had a problem in Townsend, the state police would come.
Yes. So, so she's, did you hear what she said? That if we don't have any law enforcement contract, the state police by statute covers the area, and if you call them, they will show up, it just depends when. Or the next, whatever, I don't know. Right, I don't want to. Okay, more in the back.
I was just wanting a little clarity. Dale West, I do know that state police, once they get a 911 call, they respond to this town, they're off our dime. I do know that in the contract. I was on the board when we did the 55,000 a year, and that was a very good, I felt, hourly rate difference. And I was questioning what had the sheriff's department con- offer in contracting hours? I do believe we had that discuss, or that was number thrown out at the pre-town meeting. And maybe that would give some people some ideas and ideas of what it really does cost for law enforcement and the larger number volumes of hours. And if you want your bang for your buck, sometimes you have to look for the deals.
Okay, the sheriff's department has sent out, or did send out a letter. They're quoting for this coming fiscal year, $70,000 for a single full-time deputy, deputy for 20,000 hour, hours per annum, which is what we originally had the, the first time, that 55,000 is now gone to 70. And then for a single part-time deputy for 100 hours per annum, or thousand, excuse me, 1,000 hours per annum, it's $47,000 or $51 an hour for anything under 1,000.
Warren?
In the years past, when Wyndham County has been giving us services, has there not been revenue generated from them in the traffic stops that they used to do in West Townsend pretty frequently?
We, we receive revenue from, from both the state police under their contract when they patrol, as well as the sheriff's department, yes.
But when we contracted with Wyndham County and they were giving us some more hours, your revenue was greater, correct?
It is greater. Again, that, that last year that we had the full-time deputy, we can't really compare because things changed so drastically so early in the contract. But yes, we always did have a fair amount of revenue coming in from the, the traffic stops.
What's, what's the estimated number of revenue that we generated? No, not to a dollar amount, 50,000?
Which year?
30,000? Any of them?
Oh, good.
With, with, with coverage of a little bit more.
Well, again, we only got two months into that, so I, I believe there was some reference, because that's before my time on the board. There you go.
This year.
10,000 this year, civil funds. Last year, we made approximately 6,000, received 6,000. This is all on page 10, but last year, in 2017, we budgeted 10,000, hoping for we received about six. This year, we've budgeted 10,000. I'm not sure where we are. I think we're around seven.
I think it must be three years ago, because I'm pretty sure in, it was 30, 40,000? 35,000, that's the rough number I was looking for. So, so as a taxpayer and, and wanting law enforcement to help make us feel safer, you're going to deter other things if the, hopefully the criminals don't realize that they're not going to go after them if they're a drug trafficker, but probably they're going to call the state police for them. If you spend a little bit more than 20,000, maybe not 75, you can probably generate two-thirds of what you're paying out to help people slow down in the towns that they're starting to speed back up in. You see it all the time. I mean, now the, the traffic in West Townsend, even through the villages, definitely increased without their presence. So, we may get money back to help offset their cost and probably $15,000 spent with jevene, you know, revenue generated back from them. We'd be in a better situation as far as appearance and feeling of protection.
And again, I know the sheriff would like to speak to that as well, but again, it would depend on the type of contract we had with him. If that's what we asked them to focus on was patrol, then I'm certain we could, could generate those revenues. But I thought that the whole discussion began by wanting more personal safety as opposed to traffic stops.
Well, they're not going to show up for E91, 911 calls. That's the one state police dispatch, which you have to call anyway. And you can contract them for $500,000 a year. The unfortunate homicides that happened in this town over the last couple of years, did we pay anything out of pocket for the investigations?
No.
That wasn't their contracted rate. This, this contracted rate, where the deputy is going to show up, stops for you, generates some revenue, give you a safety feeling, definitely helps, as, as my personal opinion.
She's getting her steps in today.
So, a couple of things, I'm going to come to the front so everybody doesn't have to crane their neck. For those of you who are not familiar, Vermont law allows for disbursement from the court administrator's office and the Vermont Judicial Bureau for certain ticket revenues to be returned to the municipality to cover, the idea is to offset police coverage. I can speak to fiscal year 14 in terms of revenue, because I looked up your town report from fiscal year 14, in which you got approximately a little bit over $20,000, and I believe you contracted for $20,000. I don't recall if that was a contract with us for $20,000. Maybe someone from the board or someone who's present in the room might be able to tell that, but I believe we were contracted during that time. So, that was about, I think it was about a $500 net positive gain for the town compared to the service that you paid for, per se. The fiscal year 15 contract, we did, we, we called a resident deputy program. It eventually evolved because we didn't have someone who lived in Townsend. But that full-time deputy, they were able to effectuate more time doing traffic enforcement work, which did have an increase in the amount of revenue that came. The program was a little broader in context of the scope of what the deputy was capable of investigating, though. So, as a result of that, during downtime, they were doing motor vehicle enforcement. And when calls came in, such as a 911 call, if the deputy was on duty and in town, state police would actually transfer the call over to our agency. We would respond, we'd handle the investigation. If it expanded the scope, such as a homicide, we would contact the state police BCI and have them come investigate it to ultimately offset the cost to the town. If it was something such as the, my firewood got stolen, it was about $300 worth of firewood, we would respond and we'd just handle that investigation because you might be waiting some time for a trooper to be able to make it out here to investigate. They're busy, they have a bigger area, they have limited resources like the rest of us, and so they're in a position as well that they can't always be dealing with smaller nature crimes. That's where our service is a good supplemental service, and that's why we offer the services that we do.
You answered your question. Question answered. Great job. You answered the question without knowing the question. Yes, more? Go ahead.
I know that when I first got on the board three years ago, we had a contract with the sheriff's department. And when you got it, each month, they give you a summary of what they've done for days, you know, each day, their poll, you know, people they pulled over, ticketed, fine amounts, all that. In a 20-day period, there was quite a few months where they wouldn't, they would have over 10 days that they never pulled anybody over. They never gave any warnings, never gave any tickets. And I'm pretty sure that we still have the information down on file of those summaries. So, judging by what's gone on in the past with it, you can't imagine the future to be anything different than that, is the way I'm seeing it. I mean, there was a lot of days that nothing went on with an officer in town for eight hours.
Mr. Matter? So, to address that, so this is the balancing question, and it comes down to communication, it comes down to appropriate planning. When we had the, the full-time deputy contract, it allowed for complete investigations. One of those investigations was the recovery of a significant amount of stolen property that closed out, I'm estimating here, I think it was seven burglaries across Wyndham County. Some of those were from Townsend, some of those were from Dover, some of those, I believe, were from Win Hall as well, also into Bennington County. We, we recovered thousands of dollars of equipment. That takes time, and it takes us away from patrolling the roads. And so, we don't stop cars, and we're not generating the revenue from those violations when we're doing only motor vehicle enforcement. So, there's a, I don't have the answer for what the town of Townsend wants. I can give suggestions. We've certainly had a significant amount of experience in working with the town of Townsend over the last 30 years. But the question on how much you spend, how you want to spend it, those are not answers I can give you. I can only give explanations of what different things worked, what didn't work, maybe things that we can tweak in the future.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure about this, so I want to ask, but it's my understanding that if there's a traffic stop by the state regulations, if it's a state police or it's a county sheriff, that the amount the town receives back is identical. So, it doesn't really matter which one we're doing as far as, if we have them doing traffic stops, we're going to get the same revenue back. If the state police does an investigation, we're not charged for it. If the state police does an investigation, we're not charged for it. If we contract with the sheriff's department, or sheriff's office, excuse me, then we're going to be charged for that investigation. Another point I'd like to add is that if speed enforcement is one of our concerns, and I think it is a concern especially in the congested village areas, that the radar flashing signs have been, which you see around, can be very effective and long-term, but probably be less dollars.
Further discussion? You want one more thing? Go ahead.
I didn't hear a question, but I want to address both points. You're absolutely right on the first part in terms of the, depending on what statute is written, it's going to go through the same formula. So if municipal ordinances in town, speed ordinances in town, or stop signs in town are enforced, doesn't matter what color car, doesn't matter the uniform, it gets processed the same. So the question would then be, are those ordinances being enforced? We only enforce the town ordinances when we're in town. I can't speak for the state police. To the second point, the flashing signs are great. The trouble is most of the congested villages in Townsend are on Route 30, which then require the agency of transportation's approval for installing things such as the flashing signs. The big contention is usually paying for the electricity for those. You can get solar power-generated signs, but they are not a fully sustainable sign. And so it becomes a question of who purchases the equipment, who maintains the equipment, and it also has to go through the approval process from the agency of transportation.
Nothing's easy. Just put a sign up. Yes?
I would also like to hear from the new CEO of the hospital and get permission for him to speak.
Okay. Is there objection to having the CEO of the hospital speak? There is objection. So we need 2/3 vote to allow the new CEO of Grace Cottage Hospital to speak. Yes vote will allow him to speak and no vote won't. All those in favor of allowing him to speak, please raise your hand. And against? I think there's 2/3. Agreed up front. Give me somebody not. Yes, Will? Yes, okay.
Hi, my name's Doug DeVelo, and I'm very happy to be here. I'm also very happy to be moving to Townsend and becoming a resident here. I'm not voting today because I don't live in Townsend yet, but I am buying a house and by April, I will be living in Townsend. Next year, I will be voting with all of you at the town meeting. The comment that Grace Cottage could very well hire and pay for its own safety and protection by bringing in someone into the organization to do that is definitely a true statement. However, it's very unusual for any hospital, let alone a small community hospital, let alone a small critical access hospital with only 19 beds, to have onsite safety and security personnel that have the training, the skills, the weaponry that local law enforcement has. So having a security guard, for example, on the staff at Grace Cottage, number 24 hours a day, seven days a week, would be extremely expensive for the organization, and we would not have the type of technology and weaponry that local law enforcement would have to address dangerous threats to our staff, our patients, and the like. Last year, Grace Cottage Hospital had an operating loss of well over $1 million, close to 1.3 million. So we're currently, at the present time, not in a position to add significant expense to our operation to hire full-time, 24/7 security presence. And most hospitals, most small hospitals do not have onsite security guards for those reasons, and they rely on local law enforcement. I relocated here from Malone, New York. Malone is a small community in upstate New York. I worked at a hospital that was slightly larger than Grace Cottage, but not much, and we relied on local law enforcement when we had emergencies at our organization and the local police, whether, and we had a local state police barracks in town. We also had local police department in town. And when there was an emergency in the emergency room, they were at the hospital within about a minute, and usually multiple vehicles within a minute. I'm sure you were all reading and seeing about the increase in violence in communities across the country, particularly in gun-free zones such as schools and hospitals. You know, we, our staff, our patients are extremely vulnerable. And, you know, as we see more and more incidents of mental illness and people getting access to weapons and using them to incite violence and terror, organizations like small hospitals and schools and other gun-free zones are increasingly, you know, at risk and are feeling threatened. Having more access to local law enforcement here in town benefits everyone simultaneously. So, you know, if the town were to decide to spend money on increased law enforcement presence in Townsend, it wouldn't just benefit Grace Cottage Hospital, it would also benefit Grace Cottage Hospital. But I think first and foremost, as this gentleman to my left over here pointed out a few minutes ago, it really benefits the community. It benefits the safety of our families, our homes, our streets, the tourists that fly through our communities with, in disregard, you know, the local laws and local speed limits and all kinds of other reasons. So I don't want to, you know, go beyond the issue of the hospital. The hospital is definitely vulnerable, but it's not the only organization in town that's vulnerable. And quite frankly, I think all of us as citizens are vulnerable without having more police presence in our town. And those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Yes.
I just also want to say that we all know we have a drug problem in this community. I think that everybody realizes that. And I feel like the biggest way to stop the problem is to catch them. And a police officer can't just run into a house without probable cause, but they can pull them over because they're doing 80 miles an hour through the village. And if there's no police officer here to pull them over, then they're not going to get caught. So I think that if we even have just police here to pull over people, then they have a reason to look in their car and say, oh, there's whatever might happen to be in the car. So I think we just need to have a little bit more police pulling over people, patrolling.
Dana? Right behind you, Cor.
Amendment to the motion. I'd like to make amendment to the motion. I've been listening to everyone here. I'd like to authorize, make an amendment to authorize the select board the authority to contract with police services to spend up to $50,000 to increase hours and maybe contract with either state police or sheriffs.
Okay, amendment on the floor. Is there a second? Huh? We need a second. Yes, okay. Crystal, raise your hand. Okay, discussion on the amendment. I guess we just keep going because it's kind of the one and the same, per se. Yes, sir?
What coverage are you actually going to get? Is it just going to be traffic? Is it going to be, you know, residential?
I think, okay. I mean, that's a good question. I think that's up to the select board to work with the select board.
We had a problem at the House not too long ago. I was up at Grace Cottage as a patient, and my wife called the sheriff's office, and they hung up on her and says, we don't cover that. So, you know.
I called the sheriff's office because our security was breached, and I was in the House. So clearly, somebody had tried to get in. So I immediately called the sheriff's office. He said, I cannot help you. Call the state police. And he hung up. I was very nervous, very upset. I couldn't find my eyeglasses because I needed to look for the number for the state police. I think it would have been nice if he had just said, don't worry about it, I'll contact the state police for you. Anyway, long story short, I called the state police. They spent the whole time on the phone with me, told me where to hide in the House. Two officers came, they went through the whole house, looking under the beds, in the closets, everything. I can't say enough about the state police.
So we should decide, you know, what kind of coverage we do want for, you know, I mean, nothing wrong with 50,000, whatever it takes, but it should cover more than just traffic stops.
You can make an amendment to direct the select board on the contract, can we?
I don't know.
I'm not a legal guy, so I don't know.
I don't know.
Warren? Have you answered that question? Hmm? Yes, you can. Let me think for a second. Yeah, go ahead. I'm thinking, I'm still thinking. It takes me a while to get the wheels going.
By dialing 911, you're going to get emergency response from the state police. Unfortunately, you know, no, 911 would have gotten you the state police, not Wyndham County, who the dispatcher probably should have dealt with that differently. We are getting that coverage right now when you dial 911 by the Vermont State statute. The question we're asking here from Wyndham County, if we went and contracted with them, is the revenue they would generate in showing their presence around to deter criminals, also stop people that are speeding. And in the years past, when we've paid them 35 to 50,000, they've pretty much came back with the revenue to break even. You're getting police coverage by dialing 911, free of charge. They're going to come, they're going to investigate.
Okay, we have an amendment on the floor. We have an amendment on, we're not talking between one another. That was one of the things I said in the beginning. Yes? Okay, well, hang on. The question's been called up here. The question has been called, but we have an amendment on the floor. Do we want to close debate? Requires a 2/3 vote? Or do I ask if there's any objection to close debate? Is there any objection to closing debate? No. No? No. No objection to close debate. So let's move on to voting on the amendment. We have an amendment on the floor to change the 20, basically to change the $20,000 to up to $50,000. Okay? Now, we're going to vote on the amendment. That's not the main motion. We just vote on the amendment and then we go back to the main motion. Okay? So this isn't the end of it, right? Got that? Okay, a yes vote changes the amount from $20,000 to up to 50. A no vote keeps it at $20,000. All those in favor of up to $50,000, the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed to the amendment, say no.
No.
Okay, I believe the noes have it. The noes do have it. So we're back to the original motion of $20,000. Further discussion? Oh, well, want to call the question on this one, too? Or, yeah? We're ready for a vote on this? Okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to see if the town will raise funds by taxation to contract for law enforcement services for $20,000. A yes vote passes it, a no vote defeats it, right? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Hands, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Yes, sir?
Paper ballot.
Right, put your hands down. A paper ballot has been called. Do we have seven people that want a paper ballot? If we don't have seven people, we go back to the hands, that's all. Do we have seven other people? One, two, three, four, five. Irv, you don't count, you're six, seven, okay? You're already number one. So we do have a paper ballot. Okay, we're going to vote. Yes on the paper ballot passes the motion to hire law enforcement for 20. A no vote defeats the motion. The ballot box is now open. Ballot box is closing. One, two, three, the ballot box. Oh, wait, it went to the back already. It went to the back? We got the back. Okay, ballot box is now closed. Okay, so, where were we? We were voting on a paper ballot to see if the town will vote, the town will raise by taxation $20,000 for law enforcement. Yes votes, 48. No votes, 17. The motion passes. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise $51,050 by taxation for the running expenses and liabilities of the library. I believe it is page 22. It's been moved by Craig. Second, Chris, there's a ton of seconds here. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, there is a motion on the floor to see if the town will raise $51,050 by taxation for the running expenses and liabilities of the library. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes, I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise $10,000 by taxation to be placed in the capital expenditure fund fire department reserve toward a future pumper. Irv moved it. Who said, second by Will? Seeing no discussion. Motion on the floor to see if the town will vote to raise $10,000 by taxation and place in the capital expenditure fund fire department reserve toward a future pumper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Article 19. No?
14.
14, I hate rumor news. To see if the town will vote to raise $1,750 by taxation for the old cemetery fund. It's moved by Irv, second by somebody up here. Discussion? It's on page 25, the old cemetery fund, and I believe it's the same as last year. No discussion, seeing no discussion. Motion on the floor to see if the town will vote to raise $1,750 by taxation for the old cemetery fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. This one I know. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise $17,106 by taxation for the support of social services as recommended by the screening committee. Page 26. Motion?
So.
Craig?
Second.
Second, lots of people pick one. Discussion? Page 26, no discussion? Yes, discussion?
I just wanted to know what is it all about? Because I didn't read page 26, sorry.
Page 26. Is there somebody from the screening committee here? Hmm? Where? Oh, you want to just explain what you do?
Every year, various social service agencies request money from all the towns around, and we compile them and we kind of look them over, and the social services committee take a look at them and makes a recommendation, and this is what it is, and they're all listed on the page.
That is what the social service screening committee does.
Yes, very good. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion on the floor to see if the town will vote to raise $17,106 by taxation for the support of social services as recommended by the screening committee. A yes vote passes the motion and no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. The motion passes. Article 16, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift or purchased land from municipal forest to promote reforestation, water conservation, and good forestry practices. Moved? Second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Is there any land that they're considering buying? So what's the purpose of this motion?
If you're going to turn it up against you, it's a duty, that's how it's to be able to take it.
But also, did you need also say purchase?
Yeah.
It's up to, there are no plans to purchase.
It says acquire by gift or purchase.
Okay. So if you wanted to purchase it, you'd have to come back to?
No, it could be a tax sale. Not that we would. It's an authorization.
Yes, Crystal, back.
Is there money in the proposed budget to purchase land? And what payment would that be?
No money, it's a purpose line, no expectation of a purpose line.
Thank you.
Yes?
If somebody offers you some and you don't want it, can I have it? Just ask.
Got to pay taxes on it.
I have a bridge.
I have a roof.
That's enough.
Well, we'll see you later first.
Yes, Captain.
If there's no money, buy land, and there's no intent to purchase land, should we get rid of the "or purchase" clause in the article?
No motion.
Well, do you want to answer that question first?
Yes. I'm just wondering if it's boilerplate language, or is it...
Yeah, it is boilerplate language, it's in every year, every year since I've been doing it, so. But do you want to take it out? Do you want to remove it, or do you want to just leave it? It's up to the town if you want to make an amendment to it. No?
No.
No? No, shaking heads? Okay, got a mo, any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, there's a motion on the floor to see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by gift or purchase land from municipal forest to promote reforestation, water conservation, and good forestry practices. A yes vote passes the motion, and no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes, I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Article 50, 60, 17, to see if the town will vote to set the first Tuesday in March 2019 as the date for the 2019 Town of Townsend Annual Meeting. Moved?
Moved.
Second? That, by the way, that's Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, just in case you wanted to know. Although, I'm not gonna read it again. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
The ayes do have it. Article 18, non-binding. Anybody in the back, sir? And then we'll come forward.
I'm just gonna make a comment, and I'm not gonna take much time. Earlier, when the school board was here, everybody gave the school board a hand for how much work they do.
Yes.
I want to make it very clear that the Leland Raye Board and the elementary school board have an enormous administrative structure behind them, doing all the background work that the select board has to do on their own. So if we want to talk about people who are working, we're talking about those five people up there, plus the people that help them, and they don't have near the help that the schools have. So I just wanted to know that they work really, really hard, and quite frankly, the way things go around this town, they really should be meeting every week, just to try to keep up with stuff. So give them a hand.
Was, was that just a mo?
I want a hand for her soul. Yes.
Was that just a motion to have them meet every week?
No, no.
I'm teasing. I'm just teasing. Any other non-binding business? I did see another hand. Chris, you had your hand. No?
I was gonna do the applause thing.
Oh, you're gonna do the applause thing? Okay. Any other non-binding? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to also thank the moderator.
Oh, gee whiz. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I should thank you. You guys put up with me, and I appreciate that. Every year, I don't want to do this, but I appreciate it.
Okay, any other non-binding business?
Non-binding business.
Okay, wait, wait. Okay, so, so, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, thank you for putting up with me, thank you for the fifth and sixth grades, there's a lot of people to thank that does town meeting, especially you guys that come out and sit here on those hard chairs for hours all day. The town is great, try to get more people to come out, force them to come out, it's important, town meeting needs to survive. Thank you for coming. Meeting is adjourned.